Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm calling to order our board meeting for February 5th, 2018. Mr. Henderson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Madam Chair, we have to come out of closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion for us to come out of closed session.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, any opposed? All right. Now, Mr. Henderson, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will begin with a school improvement grant update, presented by Mrs. Tamara Ishi, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Carol Otis, Federal Programs, and our Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Mrs. Beverly Key from Federal Programs.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We were asked to bring to you a school improvement update tonight. And what I would like to do with this PowerPoint presentation is to kind of bring you through from conception to our first year of implementation. So, planning year, 2016 and 2017 was our planning year. And it was at this time that we strove to put an infrastructure in place so that we could carry out the ideals and goals of the grant. Some of those are included but are not limited to staffing, hiring SIG specialists at each school, unpacking our comprehensive needs assessment, which was done at both schools, getting a third-party evaluator from East Carolina University, getting a district SIG committee, contracting educational consultants for our PD, and having new administrators named at each school for the inaugural year of the grant. In addition, we wanted to put in place a conduit so that some of these cutting-edge innovations could be put forth. Model classrooms at both schools, Chromebooks at BMS. We already had the Apple Grant at Carver Heights, the implementation of instructional coaches, and we had the extra assistant principal at Carver Heights during this year. Events and activities that happened during this year. We started our first after-school enrichment with Power Hour. And that Power Hour included tutoring, remediation, and enrichment. We increased the number of parent curriculum nights. And we started a social media engagement campaign, trying to reach our parents at a platform different from the traditional newsletter and phone call. So that brings us to the present, year one. 2017, this is considered year one of the grant. Last year is what DPI termed the planning year. During this year, some of the things that we have been able to get accomplished, started, and will complete this year. We're continuing with monthly professional development and coaching for the staff. This grant is largely focused on professional development. What we want to do is not do a quick fix, but instead provide the teachers with the tools, the resources, and the skill set that as we go along, they not only can turn the school around, but maintain any of the accomplishments they are able to achieve. We've been able to change the schedule at both schools so that they can make sure they have small group instruction, PLCs, and technology integration. And these schedules were tweaked by the principals themselves. Sometimes in a SIG grant, you will opt for a longer school day. But both of our principals had the acumen to go into their schedule, look and find the dead space in transitions and end movement in the school, tweak that schedule, and make more opportune time for instruction. We also have got our digital teaching and learning coaches assigned to go there two days, really, two days and a half per week. With the Chromebooks at Brogdon Middle and the Apple Grant at Carver Heights, we want those instruments to be more than just things that are a sideline or a support of instruction. It is our goal for those to be embedded into instruction so that when you go into a classroom at either of these schools, you see these tools being used to teach, not just being as an electronic blackboard. We also have set in place retention bonuses and accomplishment bonuses at both schools. So teachers that make growth or exceed growth, and if the school itself makes growth or exceed growth, those students, those teachers, excuse me, will be able to get a monetary stipend. We're hoping not only that that will motivate those teachers, but also do much to retain those teachers and recruit if we do have any turnover. We did have some in-kind supports, and they're listed there for you. We have planned some out-of-the-ordinary field trips for these schools and several other schools within the district through Title IV. Title IV is a new grant in the Federal Programs Department. It was authorized for Wayne County in October. We had to submit a plan in November, and we were free to spend the money in December. And while we could have gone ahead and spent the money, technically, I did not want to encumber it until I actually got the award letter from the government, and we got that in December. We also have put in tutors and software through Title I. We're going to have an Artisan Residence, and that is going to be a really beautiful program in which the arts can be extended and expanded, also through character education. That's through Title IV. We'll continue with our after-school tutoring with the 21st Century, computer-assisted instruction financed through Title I, and then the summer reading camp that you're used to having through the Read to Achieve Initiative, and now through SIG. One of the things that we want to really talk about is the in-kind supports because this is something that has been on the forefront to make sure that we were in compliance and to make sure that we had that infrastructure. So again, bulleted there for you, the additional tutors, an extra instructional specialist is going to be hired through federal funds. This extra administrator will be a person who will focus on instruction. While we know that schools that have an at-risk population have a myriad of needs, we do know that focusing on instruction and supporting teachers is the only way that we can make a turnaround there. So that job has been posted, and we are beginning to gather the applications for those. That person will have to have an administrative degree, but also strong curriculum instruction. Digital teaching and learning coaches, they are already in place. Classworks has replaced iReady, that is already in place. We also have put in a science pilot in which Brogdon Middle School and Carver Heights participated. So that we did this in lieu of a science coach. Our science coach largely focuses on middle and high. And you know, our model for that is to have our lead teachers and coaches to be in a classroom 10 months of the year, and then two months of the year they support teachers. We felt this was an immediate need, so we were able to come in and use Title I funds to be able to get those done.
Thank you.
What's ahead for SIG. On the right are five components of what has been proven successful. And I've read several white papers on this, and this is extrapolated from one of those white papers, verbatim. But I was very pleased to see that the things that the research proves works with school improvement grants, we have in place. So you'll see in the bold print, focusing on improving classroom instruction, going the distance for a safe and orderly school environment, time dedicated to instruction, strengthening connections to parents, community groups, and local service providers, and partnering with outside expert consultants. I hope I've been able to highlight for you not only our plans to do these things, but how we've already started to do those things. We're keeping in mind our overarching goals, which is to turn around these schools. We are trying to make sure we use best practice, what works. We're making sure we are doing things with fidelity. We are audited with this quite often. We have an audit next Wednesday. We had one right before Christmas. They come almost every other month. We've got other measures of success coming, and you know we'll get those in August, and that will be our test scores. And finally, please expect ongoing revisions and amendments. This grant, while we submitted it to be approved as the principals see fit, not I or Central Office, but as the principals and the SIG coordinators see fit. If they see an innovation, or a resource, or a project that they want to embark, there is a mechanism that we can amend. That is a mechanism that we use to make the amendments that I've shared with you thus far. I do want to share that thus far, we have encumbered and spent, combined with SIG funds and in-kind supports, $997,000 that we have dedicated to these schools. In addition to that, we are budgeted this year for around $175,000 each so that they can put in the innovations outlined in the document and any that come upon them when they do their professional development and when they do their study. Now, we talked about what we'll see in August. When Dr. Vecchione, who is our consultant from DPI came, we did have goals that were trying to get the school to 60% by the end of the grant. He cautioned us against that because anybody who's ever read any research with improvement of schools and school turnaround, two to three points improvement every year is what you can anticipate, is what you can expect, and what can be sustained. Now, you may have a quick spurt that first year because you've put so much energy into it. But maintaining that momentum is usually two to three points per year. So he spoke with both principals, their SIG coordinators, and their leadership teams, and we decided to reframe those goals. Both Carver Heights and Brogdon Middle School principals went back, studied what they wanted to focus on, and this is where we want to be at the end of this first year. Now, I know those percentages, when you look at them at first glance, you're thinking, that's not a good percentage. But what we are focusing on is growth. In math, for Carver Heights, who at 2016, 2017 was at 18.6% proficient, we want at the end of this year to be at 24% proficient. That is a far-reaching goal for one year. It's a rigorous goal, but it is an attainable goal. The same is true for reading, 26.9% proficient now, 34% at the end of the year. And again, these were at the recommendation of our DPI consultant. If you look at Brogdon Middle, you will see the same thing. We are starting at 23.8% in math, hoping to be at 29% at the end of the year. Reading, 28.2%, 33% the short-term goal. Now, these are short-term goals. We hope to replicate and extend that achievement every year. And we're hoping with this intensive support, this extra fiscal support, and also the coaching and professional development that these teachers will receive, that these will be achieved, and that these schools will be off the low-performing list. Any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Pridgen?
And Dr. Otis, I don't really mean to put you on the spot.
Okay, let me get my phone.
But I just want to tell you some of the concerns that I had.
Okay.
First of all, I think the SIG grant's great, okay? But I went back and I looked over the last few years at some of the different objectives that we had for the same types of things over the years, even went back as far as 10 years. And especially in the area, let's see, especially on your bottom-line target, okay, for Carver and for Brogdon. And I'm really speaking in general just for those two schools, but I'm also talking about all of our schools, okay, when I'm making the comments that I'm making. Student attendance, when I look at that, and we want a 2% rise in that. And it seems like year after year, we've had declines in student attendance rather than increases in student attendance. And part of that could go back, you could go to your suspension line, that you want to go from 52.22 to down to 10%. Well, student attendance, you want a 2% rise, you want a 10% reduction. And I think those figures you have done are very fair figures. I don't think they're far-fetched, and I understand why you were recommended to do that because you want reachable goals. But when we talk about the reachable goals, where do we go from there? When I look at the word suspensions, I'm thinking about academic because we have students that don't perform, or they do not, aren't interested in coming to school. We're looking at also suspensions because of tardies and that type of thing. Then we got to look at the home life situation. If the parents don't care whether they come to school or not, then certainly the kids aren't going to care. The ones that we're having the problems and the issues with aren't going to care. I know when Pat and I did a comment with NPR one time, she said, as principal of Gulliver High School, she said, "I can educate the students if I can get them in a desk." But when the parents let them be gone two and three days a week, it makes it almost impossible for a teacher to catch them up. You know, so there's a big, big part of that. We can throw all the money we want to at staff development, at education opportunities, and bringing more to the table as far as helping the students. And I'm in totally agreeance with that because not every student has the same opportunity, okay? But the question is, is how do we get the parents to encourage those kids to either behave right, or to either come to school on time, or to even get involved academically? And how do we control and reduce that student behavior? Because that's gone up every year rather than go down, you know? And so I think that, I think if we're looking for a 10% reduction, we've got to find a way to, we've got to find a way to address the situations outside of school and do that. I mean, I had a friend one time that said, that said, "I can solve that problem." He said, "If you've got students that are habitually that way," he said, "Get the state to remove the license plates off their cars." You know, and he said, "Punish the parents for not making their kids get there for the lack of parenting." You know, and essence, I agree with him to a certain extent, you know? But at the same time, it seems like we always are addressing the same things, but we're not doing anything about the other half of the picture, the away-from-school part of the picture.
Absolutely.
Now, later in our board meeting, we had a survey. And I think there's going to be a report of that survey. That survey goes hand-in-hand from the administrators and the school administrators with what your goals and objectives are here. But at the same time, you know, we've got three things in the survey. You know, parents said that they wanted neighborhood schools, but yet some of them don't want to redistrict, some of them do want to redistrict. So you can't have your cake and eat it too. You've got to do one or the other. And the board has already made some moves for not allowing the transfers beginning in the lower grades and moving up every year, okay? So my, you know, in an effort to get everybody back in their schools, but we don't have no choice with the K-3 initiative to do that. I guess I've gone off on a different tangent. But when we get on the survey, some of the same things that we talk about in this survey that will be presented to us later in the meeting are addressed, just like in your SIG grant with those two schools. But we've got to figure out, and the public's got to figure out, a way to get parents more involved. And the schools just can't do it all by themselves, and the taxpayers can't keep throwing money at a lot of stuff that's just not going to prove to work over the years. It takes faith-based, it takes parent organizations, it takes things like that to get behind these kids, to let them know that there is a value to an education. And I hope that as we get into this program, especially at these two schools, that we'll try to figure out a fix for those, for those, not just the school part of the program, but which you're addressing, but for the home part of the program as well.
Absolutely. And I'll just say that right now, we've got a target of 94% because 94% attendance rate is the target or the present rate for the district. For the state of North Carolina, it hovers between 95% and 96%. So we always want all of our schools to be in line with the state. So while this is a goal for this year, it's not a finite goal, it's a fluid goal. Secondly, in federal programs, one of the things that our department is trying to do in concert with the entire Curriculum and Instruction Department is to address just that by hiring someone that is targeted just to work with the families of our most indigent children. Because we know that poverty goes hand-in-hand with a lot of the things that you just said there. We have spent the better part of the first couple of months simply inoculating her with training and with experience so that she will have the repertoire to go out and do the type of visits and outreach that we need to do just that. This grant, while it does speak a lot to instructional practices, there are things definitely designed to engage parents. And we are trying to think out of the box to do those things. Now, it may seem very simple, like a social media campaign. But these parents, because they're younger than I am, but they are on their social media all day. And both of these principals are just constantly blasting what's going on at that school, all but forcing them to be a part of the family at Carver Heights or Brogdon Middle. Because if you can engage them in a method that they like, then once we get them into the school building, we can train, and we can do that. One of the things that's in this grant that was approved by DPI is we're going to have a clinical social worker that's going to work with groups of parents and students and teachers at both schools. Like I said, that money, while approved in October and ready for disbursement in November, I did not get my award letter until December. I posted for those positions, they've been hired. We are still interviewing for one more to be placed at Carver Heights, but the clinical social worker has been hired and one of the behavioral QPs. What we're hoping is not to have just another bouncer at the school to ruffle up the students who are not behaving well. Instead, we want to reteach, reframe, redirect those students while they're actually in that moment. And then as a part of that outreach, we're going to have the parents of those Tier III students coming in to have that type of instructional focus. So we are looking to address some of these problems. And no, we can't control what goes on in the home. But we can, I always think that parents will do better if they know how. Sometimes, by their very circumstance, they don't know how to parent or how to be that support or advocate at the school. So we intend to give them the tools, not only with this grant, but through our Title IV grant and our Title I grant.
It was a bad day when we did away with Truant officers in school. When they come knocking on your mom and daddy's door, you better have a good answer when you got home.
Dr. Otis, I had a question.
Yes, Mr. Flowers.
Just to make sure I understand your method here. I'm speaking of Carver Heights, that's the one I'm looking at. On your math scores, is 18.6% are academic proficient. Does that mean that, in round numbers, 20% are a grade level? Is that what that means?
Yes.
Okay. So if I walked in there at school and looked at, there would be one student out of five that was at grade level?
At this point, yes. Last year, last year.
You are, that's the 16, 17. And you're trying to get that to one out of four.
Yeah. We're going to whittle away, and I believe in speaking things into existence. We're going to whittle it away. But it has to be understood that it has to be whittled away.
I understand.
You know, we didn't get to this position, and it's, I have to say, through no fault of the school system. This is from a lot of things that has happened in our neighborhoods and in our society and in our school that has caused some of our children to not be where they need to be. Some of them don't even come to school where they need to be, so they are constantly playing catch-up. I always liken it to a footrace. You start the footrace at Wilbers, but I start the footrace here at the Central Office. But we're both running to Kinston. When I get to Wilbers, you're in LaGrange. When I get to LaGrange, you get to Kinston, but then the school year's over. So I'm not proficient. It doesn't matter that I had to come farther than you did through no fault of my own. So what we're trying to do through SIG and through all of the federal programs and all of our CNI initiatives is to close or lower that starting off point. That's why so much attention is being paid to pre-K and early intervention because if we can get them in kindergarten, starting off with a large spoken vocabulary, a large heard vocabulary, then we're not constantly having to make up this difference. But that's where we are. We're trying to pull everybody up and level the playing field.
Well, I'm going to join in with Mr. Pridgen. I just, you know, and I'm not a educator, you've never heard me say that. But I just don't think that one student out of five, that you can lay it to the school system. And the truth of the matter is, is the public drops their kids off at our door and expects us to educate them. And I can't see where you've got any parents contributing much to what's going on out there if they ain't but one in five. This is elementary, this is not high school. You would think the average person walking down the street would know elementary math, but I guess maybe that's not true.
Well, I'll say this, Mr. Flowers. I've worked at at-risk schools my entire career. And it's very easy to sometimes think that those parents are apathetic. But they really sometimes are doing the very best that they can do. And I wonder if I was plucked from my middle-class environment and put into an environment of struggle every day for everything, would I be able to function at the level that I've been afforded because I came from my environment? So with that being said, yes, they do drop them off at the school for us to educate, but that's what I signed up to do. And I'm going to work as hard and lead as hard as I can to try to close that gap, to try to empower those parents, and try to get as many resources as I can out into that community until we can be successful. It's not going to happen overnight, and this is horrific. It hurts me to know it and to think it. But it's, but we have to look at what we can do for the solution.
Well, absolutely. I mean, in no kind of way are my comments, I encourage you and salute you in your efforts.
Thank you.
I know how hard you work at it, and it's got to be gut-wrenching.
It is.
To look at a number like that.
It is, but we're going to reverse it.
Notice the effort, but I still send a message out at the parents. I come from a poverty environment. But that don't mean I was not capable. And we've got all these children that come from poverty environments, and their children are capable. I'm convinced that they're capable.
Absolutely.
It's just some kind of way, somebody needs to be telling them from birth, and I'm speaking to parents out there, that you're doing your child a real injustice if they can't read and do math. I mean, those are two basic things. Whatever else they want to do in life, and I don't mean to preach, but whatever else they want to do, if they can figure it out, if they can read and do math. But anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Otis.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a few questions, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
One of the things that I have, in reading over the SIG grant, that really strikes out to me is the issue of the behavioral issues that are occurring at our schools, particularly Carver Heights Elementary and Brogdon Middle School. And I know that in the SIG grant, it was for a transformational purposes. Would you please explain to me what transformational is as far as the reasons why it was chosen to be a transformation grant instead of any other type?
Absolutely. A transformational grant allows you to take the good things that are present in the school and keep them, and transform the things that are lacking. When you do a complete turnaround, largely, most of those things are obliterated. But in transformation, you are allowed to keep certain things, staff, those type of things. So we chose a transformational model. SIG grants usually opt for a transformational model because you can accomplish it in four years. It is very hard to start from scratch with anything and get it done in four years. So with a transformation model, it was attainable. With regards... With regards to behavior, one of the things that we had written into the grant, we weren't able to get it off the ground as quickly as I had hoped, was this new model that I have come up with and that Ms. Ishi and Ms. Key and all of us have collaborated with the principals and with the community on how we can impact these children so that they are not repeating these behaviors. And what we decided to do was to have a reteaching program. So, that having more bodies in the school that can maintain order is great. But when the grant runs out and we can't pay for more bodies, what have we done to affect change, that transformation? So, one of the things that we decided we wanted to include in this transformational model with regards to behavior is a reteaching, a redirecting part of behavior. So, we're taking the basic tenets of PBIS, because both of those schools already had that model in place. And we're going to add into it a behavioral QP, which is a quality paraprofessional. By that, they have to have experience in behavioral techniques, either at Cherry Hospital or at one of the group homes or somewhere where they can lend some expertise, but they don't have to have a four-year degree. They do have to have a two-year degree or forty-eight semester hours. We have chosen one candidate already that has a two-year degree. What they will come and do, students who are in that top tier of the PBIS, and those are your repeat offenders, will participate in groups with this QP. He will almost be, or she, the second person, like a shadow. He will visit their classrooms, he will conference with their teachers. He sees that child or his children getting near that unraveling point. He'll go ahead and remove them from the situation, redirect that behavior, and get them back in. Then, once a week, the clinical social worker, which is different than a school social worker, a clinical social worker has a license to practice, will come in and do group dynamics with those same children, teaching them skills, what to do when you get angry, what to do when you get frustrated, what to do when you're hungry. All of these things that they bring to the table at school that cause them to act out, we're now going to try to reframe that thinking, reprogram them, if you will, and that's the transformation. So, as I said, we were approved for this grant in October, but I did not get the award letter until late November. As soon as I did, I posted for those positions, and we've got two, the two of the three are hired.
Okay, and is that what this document refers to as your behavioral specialist that we were supposed to be hiring as well?
Yes, mhm, we simply retermed it a QP, Quality Professional, because I wanted them to have experience coming in. And so, in talking with Etta Cragwell and also Dr. Lynn Swinson, I think her last name is Swinson, forgive me if it is not, they asked that I reframe it that way and call it a QP, because then they can follow the regimen of a clinical social worker. If you have a behavior specialist, they operate in a silo. This will be in concert with the school social worker and with the clinical social worker, almost like a team.
Next question for you, what is your average class size at these schools?
At Carver Heights, I would venture to say they have some as low as eighteen and probably some as high as twenty-four and probably the same at Brogdon Middle.
And with those class sizes being at twenty-four, do you see any difference in the amount of instruction or support that those students are given?
I don't see any difference in the amount of support they're given. Certainly, lower class size, teacher-student ratio, the lower it is, the more quality instruction you're going to get, that goes without saying. But with the new K-three legislation, it forced us to revamp, rethink, realot. So, with that being said, licensed teachers aren't even really out there to find. So, to make sure that these principals and all of the principals on the low-performing list, but these two in particular because they are the most, have the most intense problems, I offered them two tutors per every teacher they could have hired. And if they find a teacher, then I will pay for the teacher and pull the tutors. So, what they are able to do instead right now is to get certified retired teachers who have an expertise that can come in and reduce that class teacher ratio by breaking that big class up into smaller groups or by doing what we call a push-in model and being in the classroom. But if they were to find a teacher, now with SIG money and federal money, I'm a little bit more limited upon hiring lateral entry teachers. They have to already be certified. So, if they find a certified teacher, I will then pull those two tutors back, switch it over to the teacher, and they can create a new classroom. But we also have to recognize they don't have any physical space to do it. So, and we're trying to make sure that they are getting those supports that you mentioned in every way I know how to do.
Okay, the other question, I noticed on the SIG grant, one of the things, particularly with Carver Heights Elementary, that it had made a statement that you were looking to add or replace twenty-five teachers, where are you with that?
I'm not sure where you're talking about, could you give me the page number for that?
Page fifteen. It says Wayne County Public Schools is working to change how it meets the needs of its low-performing schools. Through this transformation at Carver Heights Elementary, Wayne County Public Schools has received local Board of Education approval to change leadership, add an additional AP, implement school regrouping plan, add and/or replace more than twenty-five teachers.
That's already been done, when we did the school reconfiguration, all of those teachers were new to Carver Heights except for a few. Now, unfortunately, we did have to hire those that were already employed. So, it is my understanding that the teachers were allowed to fill out a survey and put their first choice, second choice, third choice. And then, Human Resources looked at those surveys and saw where they could teach with basis to their certificate. And then, we had a meeting at Carver Heights, I believe it was, where all of those teachers came in, it was explained to them, and then those, it was like a sort. Then, after that, after everybody that wanted to stay in the new configuration was placed, and nobody was made to stay, everybody that wanted to stay was placed, then we had to hire new teachers. That's where the caveat is, there are no more. It's not like we chose not to hire them, they're not out there. So, that's where we get these lateral entry teachers who you can make into great teachers, it just takes time. But that was done during, it wasn't even the planning year, it was the year we wrote the grant with reconfiguration.
Can I just add, that's part of technically how these schools qualify to be a federal transformation? These two schools both had new principals going in in the planning year, a percentage of new teachers, that's part of what we have to do and ought to do with the feds to qualify as a transformation.
Okay, and you're saying that we have done that?
We did that.
Probably to the.
In front of the planning year.
In front of the planning, okay. The other question I've got to ask, what is your percentage of certified teachers versus non-certified teachers at these two schools?
I cannot quote you the exact percentages, but I can tell you it is grossly skewed. At Brogdon Middle, probably more so than Carver Heights, they have a large percentage of lateral entry teachers.
Okay, and I think that leads me to the question of, if we've got this large percentage of non-certified teachers, then we should be expecting that some of this, that we're not going to see the gains that we want to see. So, I think as a board, we've got to put a little bit more focus on trying to ensure that we're getting those certified teachers into those classrooms regardless of what it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any more commensal questions?
Yes, and this is really not directed at you, Ms. Artis, because this is basically an administrative, administrative level statement that I'm about to make. So, you're not required to necessarily respond, but I would like to hear from the administration on this issue. One of the elephants in the room that this grant has not addressed, to my knowledge, is the lack of diversity in the schools that we are talking about. And I'm not talking about racial diversity. Have a fellow board member, we've had numerous discussions on this issue, and the term diversity means what it means to some people, but socioeconomic diversity has only one meaning and it only talks about one's economic status, not one's race. And my fellow board member contends that no matter how many times I say socioeconomic, there are people who are going to relate it to race. Well, if those people choose to take their informed opinion and choose to look at it that way, that's fine, but that's not what I'm talking about. But I am talking about something that you said earlier, where you indicated your background, for instance, coming from a middle-class family, regardless of your race. There being a well-known and well-documented and well-researched, I'll quote some research from one of our more prominent universities here in the state of North Carolina, Duke University did some research. And I guess if we feel that Duke is a qualified resource, then I think this research should stand on its own. Duke University talks about in a November twenty-fifteen research that they did and published in Science Daily that basically said, income-based school assignment policy influences diversity and achievement, okay? The basis was, the basis of the study was done in Wake County Public Schools. Wake County was doing school reassignments based on race, okay? They found that that necessarily did not go over well, and there's a Supreme Court decision back in two thousand and seven that basically struck down the use of race in school assignments. So, that's something that, you know, no one's arguing that. However, in this research, Duke University found that while they went through to a policy whereby socioeconomic was used as a foundation for redistricting or for student assignments, racial segregation did not improve, but the school scores did. And I wonder why? Well, based on this, based on this research, it has everything to do with what Mr. Flowers said earlier. Middle-class parents and parents at other class levels are tend to be more involved in their students' academic life. They tend to be more involved in their students' daily academic pursuits. Therefore, when you look at a school that has a mix of socioeconomic classes, then you look at a school that has the potential to have leaders in it, okay? Well, if everyone in the school is of the same socioeconomic class and none of them have any more knowledge or any more experience than the other, who emerges as the leader in an environment like that? Someone who themselves have no experience. So, I'll revert back to my days in the military. One of the things that you are allowed to do in the military is refuse an unlawful order. However, if that order is not unlawful, you are to follow it. But imagine following orders or following the leadership of someone who is incompetent. That is putting a person in a very precarious situation. So, my statement is really geared towards, not you, and I'm not asking you to answer this, but I am gearing this statement towards my superintendent and his leadership team. Because until we are willing to do something different, we're going to keep getting the same result. I don't care how many grants you put out, okay? Until we are willing to stop ignoring the fact that our schools lack socioeconomic diversity, even in the Supreme Court Justice's opinion in the two thousand and seven decision, Justice Kennedy, who, it was a five-four decision, by the way, and Justice Kennedy placed a swing vote. But basically, in his dissenting opinion, he said that there's still, even though he agrees with the lack of using race as a criteria, there's a compelling interest that exists in avoiding racial isolation, an interest that a school district, in its discretion and expertise, may choose to pursue. Even in his dissenting opinion, he spoke out against racial isolation. So, do we have racial isolation going on at Carver Heights and Brogdon? And that is something that this leadership team needs to address, and we need to do something about it. Now, there was an article in the paper the other day, and I hope my superintendent was misquoted, if he wasn't, well, we'll deal with that. But the statement was that school redistricting plans are put on hold. No such decision has been made by this board to put those plans on hold, okay? So, we have other criteria other than the K-three legislation as to what we are going to go forward with as it relates to school redistricting. We have other things on the table. So, that being said, Dr. Artis, it's more of a statement, okay? However, as we go forward with the SIG grant, I need to know that the issues that caused these schools to be in the condition that they are, are addressed. You cannot put stain over a dirty wall and claim it's a clean wall. You've got to clean the wall first before you paint it, okay?
Well, what I will say, Mr. Smith, is this, I'm familiar with the Wake County model. You and I have actually discussed it in a social setting. And I do believe during that time, they did not allow any school to have more than a third of their population on free and reduced lunch. So, that plays into two problems with Wayne County Public Schools. The first being almost two-thirds of our schools are now CEP, so all of them are one hundred percent free and reduced lunch. So, we would have to go back and reframe that. Second, and I am asking because I do not know, and I would have to go back and read the study that you're talking about, I know that model worked for a long time with regard to accountability, but I do know it was halted. I think whatever we need to do, we need to go back and look at that model and make sure we don't replicate their same mistakes. So, I do agree that diversity, most especially socioeconomic diversity, is wanton, not only here in Wayne County, but across North Carolina. There are pockets of poverty, and you can't pick up an educational journal and not read the impact that it has on zero to eighteen. No one is arguing that. So, what I will promise as the person who facilitates this and my team is that I will do everything in my power to carry out what is in this grant to the best of my ability. The societal woes, I will do what I can, I of course have no control over that, I leave that to the experts.
Well, again, like I said, that was not for you to answer, but you chose to answer.
I felt like I had to, only because you said it was from Duke, and you know, I had to show that a Carolina grad, we can answer that.
Yeah, okay. But that still does not answer my question, so that's why I didn't want you to get into it.
What was your question? You said it was a statement and not a question.
No, it was a statement to the staff, and so that's why it wasn't a question, okay?
Oh, okay, well, mine was a statement as well.
That's why I did not require a response, okay?
I know it didn't require one, but I just gave one, you know I love to talk.
Thank you very much. A very good job.
And now, we have Mrs. Beverly Bodenhouse with a presentation on the compliance review for Wayne County Public Schools CTE program. And I did get your message, and I will do that.
How much people are supposed to speak at five thirty?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we went past.
We went past five-thirty, could you hold on and let us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, at this point in the program, on the agenda, we are going to allow individuals who wish to speak before the board and prior to their speaking. to speak before the board, and prior to their speaking, need to read the statement. The Wayne County Board of Education requests to appear before the board. The Wayne County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. If you wish to appear before the board, please review the following procedures. Board of Education comment procedures. Appearance request forms are available to public receptions desk in the lobby thirty minutes prior to the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak must place their appearance request form along with any handouts in the basket located in the reception desk in the lobby. The basket will be collected at 5:00 PM, and only those who have an appearance request form in the basket will be allowed to speak. Public comments are scheduled to take place at 5:30. Presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The chairman shall call time on any presentation that exceeds the three-minute limit. Organizations, groups wishing to speak about a particular topic may be asked to reduce the time of each individual or to use a spokesperson to share comments on behalf of their organizational group. Substitute speakers will not be permitted, and speakers may not donate any portion of their time to another speaker. No presentation shall include any complaint, criticism, or negative comments regarding the conduct or performance of identified school personnel. No presentation shall include information about a particular student which is privileged and confidential under state and federal privacy laws. The first individual that has, there are three individuals tonight, Madam Chair, that wish, that wish to speak, and the first individual is Ms. Iris Robinson of 608 South Madison Avenue. She is a parent, and she wishes to speak upon the proposal on protective covering at North Drive Elementary School.
First of all, happy new year to everyone in attendance. And my concern basically is coming from the perspective of viewing how the conditions at North Drive is. I do thank you for addressing the issue with the protective covering for the bus riders at North Drive. I'm here to revisit a concern of protective covering at North Drive Elementary. First, I must say thank you for moving forward. One of the issues I will state is the attendance for car riders who have no protection from the rain in assisting those children to the front door. The other concern is the walkthrough connecting the second-grade building to the main building. There is no protective covering. And I had one teacher to complain because they have to exit and enter the second-grade building with no covering in the cold. Now, I have children myself, and as a parent, it's very tasking to run back and forth to Goldsboro Pediatrics because my child is sick. My proposal to you is that the Wayne County Board of Education consider this matter and find a way to fit it into the budget. And to finalize it, I must say, with the many illnesses and deaths reported on flu-virus epidemic, I feel strong and need to bring this matter to your attention. A teacher cannot teach if they're sick, and a child cannot learn if they're sick.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask you a question, please. You were talking about the coverage for non-bus riders, and then you, you indicated something else, and I wanted to know.
The attendance that assists those children to that front door, and as you see.
Okay, they're, they're not under cover.
They're not protected. And I have pictures there showing the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Janice Lewis, 106 Seneca Court of Grange, and she wishes to speak regarding the school policy dress code.
Well, my issue is, my daughter is eleven. She got her nose pierced. So itty-bitty, the principals known about it. They ain't said nothing about it until just recently. My issue is, you can wear these type of earrings to school, down to her shoulders, which is liable to get pulled out, but a itty-bitty nose ring that you cannot see, they want to complain about. Another issue I have going on is they're getting bullied in school. I've confronted the principals about it time and time. They have not got suspended. They've actually recently just put their hands on my children, and they ain't got suspended. But my children go to fight back, they're getting suspended. And I just don't think it's fair. And it clearly states in the handbook, too, that each child has a right to express themselves. And that's how she wants to express herself. I mean, you can't even see the nose ring at all. Like, it's so tiny, you can't even see it. It's no different than wearing hoops. But it clearly states in the handbook that each child has a right to express themselves, their parents, how they dress. Do y'all want to see her nose ring?
Anything further?
I mean, do y'all want to see it? I mean, y'all can't even see it. I don't see what the big deal is about it. I mean, it's expressing herself, as it says in the handbook, that each child has the right to do. And that's how she wants to express herself, is having something done.
Uh, Mrs. Lewis, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, next. Mr. Lewis, according to our policy, if you're speaking on the same subject, and you are obviously speak, are you here to speak on the same subject?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have anything different to add than what your wife is adding?
Yes. I believe it's, it's a personal preference that they've been made, because you won't tell me I could pierce her ears, but I can't pierce her nose. When you turn around, you can't see it. You won't tell me it's a distraction in school, but this isn't. I believe that if you want to tell me she can't have this, then you should say she can't have this.
So, so second speaker on the same subject?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
They told me I needed a note from y'all. I mean, this is the, y'all sent me here, I called up here to talk to you, you tell me to go to the school, I go to the school, they tell me to come here. Because she's a straight-A student, and they want to suspend her over it? And it's my choice, it's her parent?
Okay, we, we've heard you, sir.
Mr. and Mrs. Lewis, we will be in touch with you. They've directed you to the, to the central office, but not at this time is that appropriate for us to address. So, we will be in touch with you.
Okay, well, can she wear it until y'all get to my people?
No, I cannot give you that permission because it is against board policy.
Y'all want to pay for it, have it replaced? Because it costs.
No. All right, thank you very much. All right, and I think we were with Mrs. Boatenhouser. Boatenhouser. No, they were two together, but they did separate papers.
On a cycle about every five years, the CTE department is audited by DPI. And this has been, you know, January would have been six years, but in November, they came for three days and audited our program. And so I wanted to present to you our results. They divided into three different areas. We have commendations, areas that they said Wayne County exceeded their expectations, and then findings, noncompliance. If they were to find excessive noncompliance issues, then they could take our federal money or our state money. And then there are areas of suggestions that are areas that they feel like we could improve on, you know, because everybody can improve. So, our areas are commendations. Our first one is that we have a fully functioning team that works cohesively, and they directed from our finance department to our HR, to our CNI department overseeing our, you know, we have professionally developed sessions. You know, this year, we had, in August, where we had our teachers who were not at an acceptable level of their performance test scores. Then we invited those students, those teachers, excuse me, and all the CTE teachers, and we gave them instructional strategies. And so, you know, that was one thing that they common, they gave us a commendation on. Then our CTE data collection analysis by our IMC is exceptional. In fact, they said the CTE data report was the most comprehensive and well-developed that she had seen, and it should be a model for the state. And that is a commendation to Debbie Grantham, who, you know, collects all the data, makes sure that everything is, you know, is right. So that, that is a definite commendation to Ms. Grantham. We collaborate with Wayne Community College, Lenore Community College, Johnston Community College, and UMO. A lot of districts just have articulated agreements with just the one local community college. We have a detailed honors process where we allow our courses in CTE to become honors. And instead of just having them to submit a portfolio, we have a committee, we have a process, and then we let the principals know, and then the students can earn honors credit. And then we also, because periodically, that's a separate audit that we may receive, we require that the teachers turn in two samples of student work to ensure that they are not, that they are making it more rigorous and not just naming it honors to give the student credit. We developed a CDC reference guide, and that was when I first took over as director. Ms. Ishi asked me to do that. And then also, Ms. Grantham did a CDC guide for their day-to-day activities so that, you know, as we had two new CDCs last year, they were able to know everything that they were required to do, and they could do it more efficiently. And we have improved student performance. Our areas, our Technology Student Association, the CTSOs that are strong, our test scores are stronger in those areas, and so they're giving us a commendation for that. And then our career development coordinators, when they went to each school and were doing their visits, that, you know, they gave us a commendation of how knowledgeable our CDCs were and how helpful they were. And then our noncompliant, we had one issue. And our, every six months, we have to send a statement out to the principals saying that they only have our CTE teachers working on CTE items. Like, you know, a CTE teacher couldn't do the yearbook. And those were dated January 1st to June 30th. I sent them to the schools, the principals were very compliant, sent them back, but they were dated before June 30th, and I signed them before June 30th. So, we sent those out again, they are dated after June 30th or after July 1st. And so, but, you know, and she said this was a minor thing, but because other audits may come through and think that they had neglected to notice that. And it won't happen again. Suggestions that we review our teacher, our temporary teacher permits at the end of the year. These are our new teachers for this year, and just a reminder, and we will do that. We have, we've had seven new teachers this year, three of them in health sciences, and two of them have already received their regular permit instead of just a temporary permit. And so that's what we have to do, you know, I have to do, is make sure that they get their permanent teacher's license. And then review middle school course offerings to align with the high school pathways. And she's saying that we should develop more of aligning the middle school with the feeder high schools, instead of just saying, okay, all of our middle schools are going to have a business class. And so that's something that we're working towards. Ensure students are enrolled in second semester schedules in August. We did have one high school that was not putting their students in for the spring semester until December, January. We've addressed that with the principal, and, you know, that won't happen again. Change services of vocational rehab because our, most of all of our services for vocational rehab that we were paying for were exceptional students instead of CTE students. And so we should be directed our CDCs to go through NC Works and Work Study. And so we've addressed that. Ensure enhanced Bloom's taxonomy with all honors portfolios. Some of our honors portfolios, even though our overall process was great, we had some of them that they were viewing them as extra activities instead of enhanced curriculum. And so we are, that's something that we're doing this summer, that whenever they submit their portfolios in the fall, that we're going to address that. Continue to provide instructional strategies to improve performance. We're going to make that August session that we had the first time, we're going to have that every summer to, you know, continue. And we're going to give feedback. We are waiting because of the snow days and the delayed testing, but I'm going to address every teacher who came to that session and say, this is how much your testing, your test scores improved from last spring until December, to give them some encouragement. Review our CTE contract with Wayne Community College. That is, you know, we have a position that's half-paid, CTE, and half-paid at the community college, and they're suggesting, because we have some college coordinators at some of the high schools that DPI has funded, and they want us to look at that. Ensure equal access to all students for civil rights policies. Some of the classes that they went in, in fact, one school had an entire class of Hispanic students. And so they were, you know, they were wanting us to just double-check that we are allowing students to choose and not that we're, you know, dividing them. And so, you know, that's something that we do. Consider making all career development coordinators full-time. Currently, our CTE department, we have locally funded, you know, funded other than CTE. We have O-1 positions, so we don't have extra positions and extra funds to make our three CDCs at Goldsboro, Rosewood, and Spring Creek full-time, while we would like to. Work to improve delivery of special population services. She suggested that we make a manual, just like we have for our CDCs, for special populations, and we're working on doing, showing where our females can be in ag, and our males can be the dress designer. And Ms. Burden, you came to our CTE special, you know, our display showcase last spring, and where the one dress that was on display, a gentleman had made the dress. So, you know, that's what we're, she just wanted to point out that we need to continue to promote that. And then we have two teachers that are paid out of federal funds. Federal funds are used to enhance the curriculum, and you can only pay those teachers three years maximum, and so that was just a reminder of that.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Boatenhouser? Mrs. Boatenhouser, do you identify the teachers that are invited to come to the workshop in August?
I'm sorry.
Do you identify them based on their performance or their test scores? And then they are asked to come, or they choose to come? Do they volunteer?
Well, what we did was we took a five-year analysis, you know, because you could have one year where you have something personal in your life, or just, you know, that's.
Just the class.
Anomaly, yes. And so, Ms. Ishi had me go and view everybody's five-years averages, and then what we're working for is 70%. If they were at or below 60%, then they were mandated to come. But then because we were going to make it a very rigorous, you know, why limit it to just them?
Okay.
And so we sent out to all of CTE, and we had our very highest test scores, we had those teachers come. So, because they were wanting to be even better. But we did not publicize it that you were mandated. You know, that, that was a single email, teacher, me, to the. You know, that, that was a single email, teacher, me to the teacher, that they had to come. But then everybody else was given a general broad invitation. And then when they came to Goldsboro High School for those three days, you know, nobody knew if they were required to come or if they, you know, chose to come.
That's good. And the other question that I wanted to ask you was... Ensure equal access to all students per civil rights policies, and they wanted to make sure that the students were-
Given the choice.
-good choice.
It was not being where, you know, well, you're a male, so you should be in the ag class, or, you know, you're, you know, you know, a white female, so you should be in the health sciences class that, and we do. We, you know, we have open enrollment, and nobody is required to take any class.
Any other questions or concerns? My last question would be, are there, are there career development coordinators in other schools that are full-time?
Yes, ma'am.
But only in Goldsboro, Rosewood?
And Spring Creek.
And Spring Creek.
The smaller schools.
They're, they're, they're half-day.
They teach, well, they, they work a full day.
Full day.
But they teach three classes throughout the year, and then they're the CDC for three classes.
Okay. And that's based on the size of the school?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. All right, our district survey summary presentation by Mr. Ken Dirksen.
How about, how about the spotlights at 6 o'clock? I mean, we're past, we're 15 minutes now.
Mr. Dirkson?
Yes.
Could you allow us, please, to do our spotlight?
Absolutely.
I'm not watching the clock very well tonight. Mr. Flowers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would Brandy Howell, her family, her principal, and any exceptional children's program staff please come forward? You can stand right here if you would, and maybe face the audience at the moment. Thank you. Mrs. Howell is an exceptional children's teacher at Northeast Elementary School. She was recognized in November by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction as a 2017 Exceptional Children's Educator of Excellence. One exceptional children's teacher or related service provider from each of the state's 115 school districts receives this award, only one out of each school district. To become an Exceptional Children Educator of Excellence, the nominee must be a full-time school employee, provide direct instruction or therapy to students with disabilities, and be recognized as a leader in service to the school and or school district through innovative instructional programs and methodologies that have demonstrated positive outcome for students with disabilities. An Exceptional Children's Educator of Excellence must also demonstrate a positive reflection on the education profession. Those who know Mrs. Howell say she teaches with a tremendous amount of passion each day. She always makes sure her students are in the least restrictive environment. She works day, night, and over the weekend to make sure everything gets done. She is proud of her students. She teaches and wants to make a difference in the lives of special needs students. Mrs. Howell began her education career in 2004, teaching students with disabilities at RAH Howell Care Center in Lenore County. She joined Wayne County Public School in 2008 as a special education teacher at Edgewood Community Development School. In 2012, Mrs. Howell took a break from education to spend more time with her family. She returned to the classroom in 2014 as an Exceptional Children Resource Teacher at Northeast Elementary. Mrs. Howell holds a bachelor's degree in psychology and holds a teacher's license in Exceptional Children K-12 adapted curriculum. As an educator of excellence, Mrs. Howell receives a paid registration to the Exceptional Children Division Annual Conference, attending a special ceremony honoring the educator of excellence, and had her photo displayed in a prominent location throughout the conference. Mrs. Howell, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you on your achievement, and thank you for your contribution to the Exceptional Children's Program, to our schools, and most importantly, the students and families who are in need of your educational support and services. And we have a certificate for you, and the certificate reads, "Certificate of Recognition: The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Brandy Howell for earning the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Exceptional Children's Division's 2017 Educator of Excellence Award, given the February 5th, 2018, and signed by our board chair, Ms. Patricia Burden, Secretary of the Board, Dr. Michael Dunsmore."
Let me, of course, congratulate you, thanking you for your service. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
With Mr. Stephen A. Smith, Mr. Ken Dirksen, anyone who wants to be seen with Mr. Stephen A. Smith, please come forward.
I love you too.
Come on. Okay, okay, all right. Okay. Wayne County Public Schools, this is the NCS PRA Blue Ribbon Award. Wayne County Public Schools recently received a North Carolina School Public Relations Association Blue Ribbon Award for Effective Communications for its high school football show, Coach's Corner. Mr. Smith is the host of the show. Coach's Corner, a 30-minute cable web sports talk program, was launched this past fall. Each week, the district's six varsity football coaches were given the opportunity to discuss the prior week's game as well as the upcoming game that week. The interview show was designed to highlight each high school's athletic programs, bring recognition to the student athletes and their coaches, and promote upcoming games to get more fans involved. The program was aired on Spectrum's cable channel 18 and on the district's website. On Friday, January 26th, school public relations professionals from across North Carolina convened in Greensboro for the annual North Carolina School Public Relations Association Blue Ribbon Awards for Effective Communications Ceremony. That's a mouthful. The district was one of 38 school districts statewide to receive an award. Mr. Dirkson states that this award could not have been made possible without the support of the high school athletic programs, and of course, Mr. Smith, who single-handedly produced, videotaped, edited, and hosted each show as part of his regular duties. On behalf of the board, we would like to congratulate the Department of Communications and Public Relations for this achievement, with special recognition to Mr. Smith for his efforts in producing an award-winning video program for our schools and the communities. So before we hand this out, let me tell you a little bit about Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith and I have known each other for a lot of years. We both officiate high school football together, and we have done some, we've made some really good calls, and we've made some stuff that I don't, I don't know.
You have.
But Mr. Smith is, I must say, a very, very conscientious, almost a perfectionist. And knowing him like I do and working with him over the years like I have, I can honestly tell you that this award does not surprise me in the least. He is definitely well-deserving, and I want to say to you, Steve, great job, and I knew you would do good. Thank you so much. The certificate reads, "The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes Steve Smith for earning a Blue Ribbon Award for Effective Communications from the North Carolina School Public Relations Association for the Coach's Corner Program." And the other certificate reads, "The Wayne County Board of Education recognizes the Department of Communications and Public Relations for earning a Blue Ribbon Award for Effective Communications from the School Public Relations Association for the Coach's Corner Program." And this is signed by Patricia Burden, Chair, and Mike Dunsmore, Superintendent. And the plaque reads, it's a nice plaque, isn't it? Okay. The plaque reads, "Award: Blue Ribbon 2017 for Effective School Communities and Public Relations, Wayne County Public Schools, Electronic Media Coach's Corner." This is the silver award presented by the North Carolina School Public Relations Association. Please give it my hand.
Yeah. Great job. Yes. I appreciate it. Good job.
He did slip.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
He's giving the plaque, not me. Can I put it back in my office, then?
All right, Mr. Dirkson, we're ready for your presentation, a summary of our, a survey summary.
Madam Chair, Board of Education, Dr. Dunsmore, thank you for the opportunity to share these survey results. This was actually a presentation we'd planned to deliver back at the January board meeting, but inclement weather forced us to push the, the work session, which again, inclement weather came up, so we pushed it to February meeting. So I appreciate the opportunity to share these survey results with you all. As you recall, this survey was actually conducted prior to the holiday breaks. It was a 10-day survey. We had three questions. The first two questions were essentially weather report questions. What are we doing well? What can we improve upon? Or what concerns do you have? And the third question was actually a locally developed question geared towards all the discussions that have been taking place regarding student assignment, populating Wayne County Public Schools, the discussion of redistricting, how that works, school boundary lines, and access to magnet-style schools. So in looking at the first question, this was actually the highest level of engagement through the survey. We had 1,400, over 1,400 thoughts or comments shared, and 28,000 star ratings that were shared. Now, what that means is when you took the survey, you had a chance to read everybody's comments. And you could, kind of like Expedia, you could give a star rating. Now, that 28,000 isn't the total of one star plus three stars plus five stars. That's how many times thoughts received any type of rating. 28,000 ratings, that's how many times people were looking at these comments and applying a star to them. So that's certainly exciting. And of course, that was the question that focused on what can we, as a district, improve upon. The second question, you can see as we get into the second and third question, not everybody completed these questions. Not everybody that, that, that took the survey necessarily took the time to answer the questions. They answered the question that was most important to them, what can we, as a school district, improve upon? But we did receive, I think, a lot of good feedback regarding what do you appreciate about our schools? And of course, most certainly, our local question, we received 689 thoughts or comments regarding, you know, there's been much discussion lately about student transfers, school boundary lines, and access to magnet schools. What are your thoughts or questions at this time? So in total, we received 2,762 thoughts or comments, a little shy of 2,800 comments, and over 42,000 star ratings. That means people went into all these thoughts, and at some point in time, regardless of the rating, 42,000 times, stars were applied to us, to thoughts. So I think that's certainly exciting, and a level of engagement we haven't had previously in any type of survey that we, as a district, have done. So looking at the demographics, participants, I don't have the breakdown per question, but overall, about 46.5% of the feedback came from parents' guardians. Surprisingly, 45% of our staff members participated in the survey, so that's a high, high percentage. Four and a half percent, other, 3.6% community members, and we did have a couple of students that took part in the survey. So let's get to the meat of the, the analysis. Basically, it's broken down into four areas: areas of appreciation, areas of concern, redistricting in magnet schools, and community engagement. The largest conversation, which we'll get to next, relates to the appreciation question emerged as quality of teachers and staff. There's a couple other areas of appreciation that, and that relates to communication leadership and parent communication involvement. I'll get to that later in the presentation. So areas of appreciation, 56.7% of the stars, the largest theme overall. Participants expressed overwhelming appreciation for the teachers and staff. They described the teachers as dedicated, caring, and supportive of students. I don't think anybody in this room can't agree with that. We have some very hard-working staff and are doing their very best each and every day for our students. As you dig into the comments, and I gave all of you the individual comments that were shared, all 2,700 comments, you also know there's some appreciation, the superintendent, for his efforts to improve the district, as well as the opportunity for students to enroll in innovative programs like Wayne Elementary College High School and Wayne School of Engineering. And again, that's that, that question that relates to what do you appreciate about Wayne County Public Schools? So now, areas of concern, this is again, the largest area of engagement through the survey. So the largest conversations focused on ways in which we could provide more support to our staff. Suggestions through the thoughts included providing more in-class assistance, increasing compensation, and ensuring teachers do not personally pay for classroom supplies. In addition, participants would also like updated classroom supplies, materials, and textbooks. I think as you dug into the, the meat of the comments, though, you also noted some other areas of concern that weren't necessarily in a high level of conversation where people were starring them, but comments related to busing, diversity and equity of our schools, and the Wayne School, Wayne School of Engineering lottery administration, or the fairness of it, and desires for more EC supports for our students. So as we jump into the, the actual themes themselves, staff support, which again, the largest theme, participants would like for more staff to be given more support. They want to limit teachers' responsibilities that are unrelated to classroom instruction, providing more classroom assistance, and listening to our staff members' concerns. Salary and benefits, participants suggested that staff should receive an increase in salary and supplement rates. They expressed that this would make the district more competitive in terms of attracting and retaining quality teachers. And that, where they talked about the textbooks, that supply and materials, the third level of the conversation there, participants would like students to have more adequate resources and up-to-date textbooks. They also believe that teachers should not be using their own money to pay for, for resources. And I don't think any of these concerns haven't been expressed amongst our board members or our administrations. We work through strategic planning and doing the very best to move our district forward. So redistricting magnet schools. This was interesting because it was, it was a very open-ended question. It related to both magnet schools, it related to redistricting and moving and drawing, and redrawing of lines. There were some very clear sentiments related to providing magnet schools equal opportunities for all students across the district and equal odds in a lottery for every student, where things get a little bit more mixed. And I don't think that it's surprising, because I think there is a lot of mixed sentiments from the public, from educators, how best to provide student transfers, and how do we address district boundary issues or concerns regarding redistricting. Some participants would like clear rules regarding transfers of students, others would like that numbers reduced, and in some cases, some said, we don't want it at all. Participants also expressed a desire for boundaries to be changed. I thought that was interesting, because when it comes to redistricting, that's usually a very controversial term. But I thought it was interesting that within the survey, there was people that expressed an interest in redistricting, whether it was for overcrowding issues, or whether it was for race and socioeconomics. So there was a lot of mix, but there was some consensus that they do want to see that redistricting to occur. So I thought that was interesting.
Let me just talk about that. The percentages, I mean, so what are we looking at as far as those who expressed interest in not changing any district lines or redistricting?
You have the comment, I mean, all of the comments, I mean, there is no calculation of how many supported, how many didn't support, so...
Okay, so we had them from all over the spectrum.
That's exactly right.
Some supported.
And I think, and I think that's true of comments we've heard, and I've got some final thoughts at the end, but I don't think that's surprising. I think when we've heard the feedback through strategic planning, when we've had comments from people who've come up here during your Board of Education time, they've expressed similar concerns, but sometimes the solutions are very different based on the eyes of the person providing them.
Yeah, but we have a very small percentage of our student population that's represented that actually come to meetings and speak to students.
Exactly. And I think there's a very small student population actually participate in the survey too. So, looking at the redistricting themes, um, participants would like to see all students given the same opportunities regardless of the school they attend. Um, participants expressed a variety of thoughts regarding student transfers. Some would like to ensure that employees' childrens can transfer. Weathers would like clear rules regarding student transfers. I think that stems from some of the conversations had last fall that may have been put out there in the media from different conversations, you know, during work sessions, um, related to, um, student assignment and related to stu- the transfer policy. Um, participants also suggested that all schools should offer equal opportunities, especially for sports, to reduce the number of transfers. Um, that was interesting to me because that, that's telling me that there's a belief by some people in our school community that students are only, that are seeking transfers because of a sports program. And I don't know, the, I don't know what kind of data is even out there to, if that belief is just a perception or a misperception. But certainly, I thought that was interesting that the comments were coming out for that. Um, participants also expressed concerns regarding district boundaries. They would like boundaries to be drawn so that overcrowding can be reduced and students could attend schools close to their homes. Well, again, that's kind of a mix because depending on where you live, the, the school closer to your home could be dealing with an overcrowded situation. So, even though your house may be closer to that school and you're in a different line, it may not be feasible for you to go to that school. So, those are the challenges you as a board have to address and have to look at all the data. But certainly, these are concerns that people are expressing. Um, the other, uh, things that were expressed was they would like to ensure that boundaries are not drawn along race and socioeconomic lines. Now, that, now that statement to me can be interpreted a couple of different ways. There's some that believe that, you know, we should only be redistricting based on the overcrowding situation. There's some that don't want race and socioeconomics to further divide, um, the population of schools. Um, there's some believe that, uh, or express concerns that we've already achieved that based on the fact that we haven't redistricted in a number of years. So, you have higher levels of populations of high-poverty minority students. And so, again, that, that last statement as part of the analysis can be interpreted a couple of different ways. But I think that's the challenge that, that you as a board and this district administration has, is figuring out how best we can redraw lines if we're going to take on that challenge and make it the best and most fairly and most equitable. So, looking at magnet school, now this is where things get a little bit clearer, where more, there's a little bit more cons- consensus. Participants would like each student to have an equal chance in a lottery and an equal opportunity for admission to the school of their choice. So, those schools that are lottery schools, they want a fair system for getting into that school. Uh, that's what they express. And then as far as magnet school systems, participants appreciate that magnet schools provide students with the opportunity to focus in one area and develop their strengths. They'd also like to see more of these type of programs in place. So, I thought that was really good feedback from our parent communities and our schools. Now, looking at community engagement, um, a couple of different themes have evolved here. So, you have communication and leadership, and that, that impacts all of you, and a parent communication and involvement. So, that parent involvement that we were talking about earlier in the meeting. So, both of these themes showed high levels of appreciation. They are grateful for the opportunity to share their thoughts and engagement, um, and for schools involving parents communicating with them. So, they like the two-way communication. Um, although participants are appreciative overall, they would like to see some improvement in these areas. Um, they would like to see more staff involvement in decision-making and better communication between school and home and more parent involvement in the schools. And looking at the appreciation, the, uh, participants appreciate the opportunity even be asked for their input. They appreciate the opportunity to provide their input through the survey and that we as a district are actually soliciting their insights and input. Um, opportunities, so they would like for staff to be more involved in the decision-making process and both have their opinions heard and also be informed. So, again, that two-way communication, but this time, instead of home and school or school and home, it's the staff saying, "We want to be more involved in district-level decision-making and also have you more involved in what's going on day-to-day with them." And participants would like district leadership, and as you dug into the comments, that wasn't just district administration, but that was also Board of Ed, more involved in the classrooms. And I think the reason for that was so you can have more of that dialogue and, and for them to feel like that their opinions matter with you as far as decision-making. So, as we look at the parent communication and involvement, participants highly appreciate the parents who support their children in schools. Parents also appreciate the communication they receive from the teachers regarding their children. Um, participants would also like to be more involved in the schools and more responsible for their children's education, and that falls back on the school, looking for those opportunities that how can they better engage parents in the schools and the school's decision-making and, and helping them, their children be more successful. So, here are the final thoughts, and I did have a disclaimer built into this as well, but also some, some challenges. Um, as I shared earlier, I don't think there were any comments, as you read through them, that were a surprise. We heard a lot of these type on, uh, comments made on a smaller scale through the, uh, from parents, staff, community members at the beginning of the district strategic planning process, as well as, you know, opportunities through monthly board meetings. Um, many concerns shared, uh, shared, and this is the disclaimer, and, and I'm not trying to put this light, you know, put this lightly, but some of these are kind of out of your hands. You can't control the state's salary schedule for teachers. You cannot control the, um, reductions in the state budgets that have impacted support positions, instructional assistance, which has in some ways resulted in some classroom teachers having more duties placed upon them because there's less support positions in the classroom. Um, we can't control the mandated testing that comes down, um, and then the decreased duties. But there are some concerns that, that you can look at, that are in your hands. Um, but, but in many ways, there's no clear consensus as how you address them as a board. Um, you know, and that, that includes the redistricting or redrawing of lines or student, how to populate, how best to populate a school, um, how to fairly administer the Wayne School of Engineering lottery, which, and I'll just say, that, that was done in, to reflect the same type of lottery that's been in place at Wayne Elementary College High for years. And that was changed last year by the board in, in a way that they, that this board administration felt it was most fair. But as you heard from comments, you know, from monthly board meetings and of course through this, there's some people that had concerns, and that's where that stems from, if you, if you haven't put that together. Um, so there's some that feel there could be a, a more fair way to do it. And that's something that this board and this administration has to look at. Um, and at the end of the day, make a decision that you all feel best is most fair for everyone. And of course, increasing teacher, local teacher supplements, well, y'all can come to consensus on that, but at the end of the day, if you don't have the Board of Commissioners support, it really falls in line, it has to be a, a consensus between this board and the Board of Commissioners because that's where the funding comes from. So, I think that's important to note, that while some things are in your hands, it doesn't make, necessarily make it easy for you to address. Comments also reflect the need for the board and the district administration to at least take a closer look at the increased interest and desire for having the district be able to offer more local to school choice magnet offerings. And so, and, and the reason for that is when we look at, in, in addition to the comments that were made, but when you look at the actual applications that are coming in for these schools, there's a lot of families that are, aren't even enrolled in our schools. There are homeschool families, there are private school families. So, these are families that have chosen other options that are actually interested in becoming a part of Wayne County Public Schools based on these type of program offerings. And, and I share that only because when you look at the enrollment and the potential for possibly increasing enrollment in the ADM, um, there's a lot of potential for offering programs, but how you do that fairly and what, what's feasible, that's a challenge, again, this board has. These are just concerns and, and comments, but certainly things that you all can weigh. And then you get to decide as a board where the priorities lie and what you feasibly can or cannot do. And of course, most importantly, while all of these themes are important, every comment shared and, shared should be considered. So, I, I wouldn't say that you should necessarily just look at all the themes that have been placed out there through the analysis, but actually look at what the comments are. And then you can make informed decisions based on the feedback you're getting as far as what decisions you as a board might need to make. So, that, at, at this point is where my presentation ends. If you have any questions, I can certainly, um, take them at this time.
Okay. Um, going back to the question that Mr. West asked you earlier, is it possible to extrapolate numbers?
I can, I can see what I can find out.
Okay. All right. Mr. Dirksen, um, I was unable to open, um, any of the information you presented and I, and I, so I haven't been able to review it at all. Um, but were the other board members able to open that?
I couldn't open it on mine.
You couldn't? I, I, I haven't been able to open it. Mr. West said he could not.
So, three of us could not and two did. And the superintendent has it on his.
So, I would be very much interested in looking at it. I couldn't read it on the overhead there. Um, but I want to point out, in, in surveys like this, Mr. Smith over here has, has talked about the people at the bottom end of the socioeconomic, um, ladder and, and, um, I just don't feel like that those folks and Dr. Artis said people, uh, so many people just, uh, are just trying to survive, trying to hold on, that they probably didn't participate in that, this survey that much. So, like, when you, when you do a survey, it depends on who you ask, and it also depends on how the question is asked. Um, what I'm getting at is I always hear the subject of magnet schools, and I have stated in the past, um, my concerns about a magnet school and the School of Engineering and, um, the early middle college. And if you, okay, we've got eighteen thousand, six hundred students in rough numbers in Wayne County. They say we've got six hundred of them in those, um, special schools or in a magnet school. What about the other eighteen thousand? And the ones that are going to apply for those schools and go for those special schools, and the schools are great, I mean, they offer a great opportunity for those six hundred students or however many that are there. But the people on the bottom end of the economic strata are not going to be the ones, in my opinion, that are applying. So, the very people that Mr. Smith is concerned about as much, those things really don't apply to them. If we come here in the city of Goldsboro and we take Goldsboro High School and make it a magnet school and we put six hundred students in it from all across the entire county, then what about all those other students? That's, that's been my question all along. And I've, I've received a lot of chastisement in that I'm not just jumping up and down in favor of magnet schools and, and those kind of schools. But those are my questions. How are we not pulling valuable resources away from the ones on the bottom end of the scale to create those schools? And there's obviously a lot of different opinions here on the board itself. But, um, um, it, it's, it clearly appeared that your survey was slanted towards a magnet school. So, and you said yourself that there was a lot of different opinions.
Yeah.
And I'm putting words in your mouth, but that's basically what you said. Um, and I, I want to go on record as, as that I'm one of those opinions that questioned that mindset. Thank you, Mr. Dirksen. You always do a great job.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns, or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Dirksen. Uh, next week we'll have a count, School Counseling Program Impact Presentation, and I'd like to ask Dr. David Lewis to inter- introduce our speaker.
Good evening, everyone. As you may know, February fifth through ninth is National School Counselors Week. This week, across America, school counselors are being recognized for the important work they do in helping students across all grade levels achieve their potential. At this time, I'd like to introduce Matthew Dotterie Grubbs, School Counselor at Grantham Middle School. Mr. Dotterie Grubbs serves as President of the Wayne County School Counselors Association and has recently been elected Treasurer of the North Carolina School Counselors Association. He has prepared a brief presentation for you this evening as an update on counseling services in Wayne County Public Schools, and I'm glad to see so many of his fellow counselors hanging there tonight. You've come to support Matthew. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Dunsmore and Dr. Lewis for allowing us to be here today. As we start National School Counseling Week, part of the week is celebrating school counselors and what we are doing in the schools. Um, the other part is, and I would argue more importantly, is celebrating those that surround school counselors, that support what we do and make what we do possible each and every day. So, thank you for that opportunity. Uh, I want to present to you, just like Dr. Lewis said, uh, just some quick data that we have collected as school counselors, a quick snapshot of what is going on here in Wayne County and some of the great things that are happening. So, this first slide shows you the breakdown of school counselors in Wayne County. We have forty-six school counselors. We have, um, one military liaison. There are three that are operating at multi-levels, so typically middle school, high school, and then you can see the other breakdowns from there. As we start looking at, at class, at caseload, we have, as I stated, forty-six school counselors. There are nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty students in Wayne County. That averages up to about four hundred and twenty students per school counselor. Uh, and you can see on the, on the chart there, the, that almost ninety percent have a caseload of over three hundred, uh, an average. The American School Counselors Association, which regulates our standards and evaluations, recommends two-hundred-and-fifty students per counselor. But we hear this, this number statistic thrown around for, for teachers and classroom size and, and all of that. So, we don't make this statement as we are, um, in a deficit, but to bring awareness to despite the caseloads that some of our school counselors have, and you can see some have between five and seven hundred students that they're working with. This next slide shows some of the great things that are happening with our school counselors. We have over half of our counselors, they're reporting that they're meeting with over one hundred students per month, averages about to, to eight a day. That is on top of, um, small groups that they are conducting, classroom presentations, parent meetings, five oh four meetings, working with EC and IEPs, cumulative records, and of course, as stated in our contracts, other duties as assigned. Um, and they are doing some great work with these students and making some great strides as we are working to help our students achieve great things in our schools. The next slide shows some of the common, common student concerns, and I think this aligns very well with ASCA and the North Carolina School Counselors Association. Some of the big hot topics that we're seeing are teasing and bullying, peer-to-peer relations. We have a lot of that throughout school. Home life is one of the big things that we are dealing with. School disruptions, grades and scheduling, college applications, and of course, the catch-all of other, which includes, um, or combines some of these other ones into that. So, what does that mean for us as we embark on National School Counseling Week and as we continue to make strides as school counselors here in Wayne County and in the state? Um, the first is a change that happened, um, quite a few years ago, but brings some awareness to our positions, is the change from being called Guidance Counselors to School Counselors. This aligns not only with our license as professional school counselors, but also brings a reflection on what we do as school counselors, not just providing guidance, but the holistic programs that we provide for our students in our schools. We're also looking at, at robust professional development. We are very fortunate in Wayne County to have a Wayne County School Counselors Association and a board that plans professional developments for our school counselors throughout the year. We are so thankful that we have the opportunity to meet and continue, continue training each other in things that are specific to school counselors. We have counselors from across the state that ask us how we do what we do and how we have a board and how we have an association. And so, that's an envy of other counselors across the state, and so, we're thankful for that. And we look forward to further training in the ASCA model, which, uh, like I said earlier, dictates our, our observations and our evaluations and how we can train our administration and our school counselors to make that, um, grow even further. And lastly, um, we are so thankful for the resources that we are given, um, through, uh, Wayne County Public Schools that go towards things like, uh, further in our education, small group, lessons for classrooms, incentives and resources, and many other supplies that assist our students. As we always say, every little bit helps. So, thank you again for your time. Thank you again for your support and, um, helping us help our students.
Ms. Burden?
Yes.
Um, if it's not asking too much, you, I'd like, if he could get his colleagues to come by and let us congratulate them and shake their hands because they've sat here so patiently and waited for this.
Well, I'm going to ask them to wait just a little bit longer, and, uh, we will be presenting our proclamation. The superintendent will do that, and we are going to ask them to come forward and congratulate them.
I just didn't want them to leave since they have given it, so.
Mm-hmm. We haven't forgotten it. Any other comments or questions? Did you do all of this data gathering?
Well, it was, it was all of us. It was all of us. We were, um, each counselor was asked to submit monthly data, and we compiled that and pulled it together. We'd like to continue collecting that and get some more specific data, um, but as we started out, we thought it was a good, good place to start.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight, and with that, with the changes that... And with the changes that are occurring, we are going to move the School Counselors Month proclamation up to number F under General. And so we will come back to that immediately after approving the agenda. We added under Board Action N, Approval of Superintendent's Goals and Objectives. And under Five Consent Agenda, we added number D. And that was denial of student transfer appeal.
Appeals.
Appeals. That's all. Okay. Could I, at this time, have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Second. All right, all those in favor, please show by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we would like to ask the superintendent to present our proclamation and ask our counselors to please come forward.
And if you would please stop the microphone, just give us your names because I don't know about the rest of everybody here, but I am horrible with names.
Again, Matthew Dotterie Grubbs, Grantham Middle School.
Michelle Garley, Meadow Lane Elementary School.
Renee Phillips, Eastern Wayne Middle.
April Grace Hill, Tommy's Road Elementary.
Sharon Hennett Cox, Grantham Elementary.
Vic England, Spring Creek Elementary.
Lillian Mills, Goldsboro High School.
Millicent Brooks, Dillon Middle School.
Cheryl Stafford, Brogdon Primary School.
Lisa Royal, Eastern Wayne Elementary.
Valerie Gregory, Eastern Wayne Elementary.
Troy Harris, Brogdon Primary School.
Carrie Lori Wainerly, Middle College High School.
Kathy White from Eastern Wayne High School.
Thank you all for coming, and I do appreciate your patience. And I'm sure many of you know I also was a school counselor and I was a guidance counselor back when they did that. So, you know, I appreciate, I understand what you all do and thank you for everything you're doing for our students. And we do have a proclamation this evening. It's the Wayne County Board of Education for School Counselors Month, whereas the school counselors are employed in private and public schools to help students reach their full potential. Whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. Whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. Whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential, set realistic goals for themselves. Whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance, complement, comprehensive school counseling programs to help our students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive development, development school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all of our students to achieve success in school. Now therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education of Wayne County Public Schools does hereby proclaim February the School Counselors Month in all public schools in Wayne County. And it calls upon school administrators, teachers, students, and citizens of Wayne County to recognize and support this action dated this fifth day of February the year 2018 by our Board Chair, Ms. Patricia Burden, and Dr. Michael Dunsmore, the Secretary of the Board. And again, thank you for all you can do. And if I can shake each of your hands and head right down.
Thank you. Good job, though. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. I know it's not easy. Thank you. Thank you. How are you? How you doing? How long have you been here? Have you been here? Congratulations. And thank you for all you do. Congratulations. I hear you enjoy your job. How you doing? Nice seeing you again. Hi, how are you? Tell your husband I said that. Where is he? How you doing? Fine.
Congratulations.
And Madam Chair, one final thing. We will have to approve that proclamation, and I would ask that the board vote in support of that.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So move.
He moved, not so.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor, please show by raising the right hand. Thank you very much. That is approved.
Thank you, Madam.
I've already signed it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, let me go back to the agenda. At this time, we need to approve the minutes of our January 11th, 2018 meeting. Could I have a motion to do so, please?
So move. Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Give me a show by raising your right hand. Thank you. I am going to ask that a motion be made to vote to approve the minutes of the closed session meeting on January 11th, 2018. And that, and within that motion, we want to have those minutes remain closed due to confidentiality. So I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair?
No, I'm right.
You're correct.
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes for closed session on January 11th, 2018 and to remain closed due to confidentiality.
Madam Chairman, I make that motion.
All right.
Second.
All right, thank you both. And all in agreement, show your right hand, by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. All right, regular board meeting, work session, and committee meeting schedules.
Yes, Madam Chairman, we have had several conversations about whether the board's pleasure was to continue with work sessions as well as having committee meetings or just doing work sessions or just doing committee meetings. And also then, the second discussion, would that be, is we've had talk about the dates and the night of the week and the position in the month for our regularly scheduled board meeting. And I know Mr. Schwartz is here and can talk to his availability in that one. But we would like some direction on where the board would like as far as work sessions and committee meetings.
Any comments?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I express my opinion that the work session that we had, I do not feel it's necessary to have both the work sessions and the committee meetings. I would prefer that we do things in committee. I think we've given the work session a try. There's very few work sessions that we have that at least one or two board members don't get up and walk out early because they've got some other obligations because they don't know how long that work session is going to be. I think handling things in committee has always worked. And if a committee member could not attend, we always could get somebody to fill in. I feel like our staff, our central office staff, one of their major duties and their main duty is to offer support to our local schools and the schools in our district. And I feel like when their time is tied up all day from being in here for a meeting, that they can't properly run their departments, nor can they offer the assistance that might be needed in those individual schools at that time. Whereby a committee meeting keeps it down to a smaller concentrated group. We have staff members that participate in each one of the committee meetings. So their portion of what would be done in a work session can also be done in the finance section. Now that we've got the intervention and we're using board docs, our minutes from our meetings are placed up on board docs. So each board member has the opportunity to go in and see what took place in that meeting where we didn't have that luxury before. And I think that's part of what drove us to a work session. But now that we do have that, we certainly have ample time to be able to contact the superintendent, other board members, and also the leadership team to answer any questions that we may have about what happened or transpired in a committee meeting. But I don't think it's economical for us to have work sessions under those circumstances. And I also feel like we're doing an injustice to the schools by occupying the time of our entire staff down here at that time when we can accomplish it in committee meetings and that we can accomplish the same thing and do it in a shorter amount of time.
Any other comments regarding whether we would use committee meetings and work sessions together or we would change and go from work sessions to committee meetings?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Smith, if you'd like.
Okay, well, just kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Pritchard said. I'm in total agreement with him. However, we need to, you know, not necessarily take work sessions off the table because we can always call for a special work session in the event we need to have or to discuss a specific matter if it warrants that. But I do agree with him wholeheartedly that we have been rather redundant in our use of it. You know, we have a committee meeting, then we have a work session, and then we have a board meeting, and we talk about the same thing three times. So I do agree with that one hundred percent.
Okay, Mr. Powers?
I was one of the ones that I was encouraged in a work session. And but the reason I was encouraged in a work session was to, in lieu of doing finance committee and facilities committees, some committees have to stand, like student services and everything, they obviously have to be individual committee. But that is not what has transpired. What has transpired is we have had a work session and committee meeting. So it is redundant. I felt like originally that we would have maybe better media coverage at a work session and everything would be told to the entire board one time, and we would move forward like that. But in theory, it seemed good, but in practice, it hasn't worked out that well. So I'm fully prepared to go back to committee meetings and work sessions as needed. And I so move, I make a motion at that effect, that we go back to committee meetings and work session as called by the superintendent.
Second.
All right. We have any discussion, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of returning to committees and calling work sessions as needed? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right, any opposed? All right, thank you. So we have agreed to go back to committees.
Thank you for board members. The second piece of that was, as many of you know, we have, I believe there's several community groups that meet on Monday nights as well as our city council members. And there's been some talk and questions to moving our board meetings to a different night of the week or maybe not necessarily the first of the month and changing that. And I wanted to put that on the table for discussion. I know some of you have spoken to me personally about that. I would like to get that to a resolution this evening and include Mr. Schwartz in that conversation. Do assure that he can be here for the representation we need.
So are we asking to move from Monday night to another night? Are we asking to move to another week on Monday night?
Yeah, I think either or. I, my, this is just a personal opinion and with our staff, coming back on Mondays, it is difficult, I will admit, to get ready for a Monday night board meeting. But I also take very seriously the board's time, our media time, and the public's time. And I've had many come that I think there's meetings Monday night that are pretty active. And also tomorrow morning is typically our Board of Commissioners meeting. It meets twice monthly. And in some of the stuff that, you know, we have to get together here tonight and get to them first thing in the morning. So I would ask if we possibly look at a different night of the week. If it's something, it's easier to move the week. I'm open for suggestions or input from any of the board members and/or Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
Madam Chair, the superintendent had asked me to check on best dates for our firm. The best dates for us would be the fourth Monday, the third or fourth Tuesday, any Wednesday or Thursday for avoiding other conflicts.
I would, I would say that a Tuesday night would be a better night than a Monday night because, as the superintendent has said, that would give the staff Monday time to better prepare. But I do think that we need to be on a staggered week with the County Board of Commissioners. And so that would put us like on the second Tuesday night or the fourth Tuesday night so that if there was something that we did, that the commissioners needed that information or that input, that there would be enough time to get it over there to them rather than having to. So I'm flexible any night except Wednesday night. I go to church on Wednesday night, so that's a rule.
Okay, let me just state this. On Monday nights, we have the city council meeting. And members that come from other agencies, groups, that come to our board meetings, they leave out early to go to the city council meetings. And that's the first Monday.
Yes.
All right, on Tuesday nights, you have the NAACP. And we have representation from the NAACP at all of our board meetings.
Do they meet weekly?
They meet once a month.
Okay.
That's the first Tuesday. I think it's the first, yes, it's the first Tuesday.
Second.
Second Tuesday? Okay, so that one, okay, second Tuesday. All right then, and Wednesday night, of course, is everybody's church night.
Thank you for that.
And then Thursday, okay. So we could move to a different Tuesday or we could move to Thursday?
But just for clarification, Mr. Schwartz, you did say fourth Monday.
Fourth Monday, yes, that works.
So we can still keep Monday and just go to a fourth Monday instead of a first Monday? But Monday is probably not a good day for you.
Well, we're used to that. I mean, we can, I think the biggest thing that I run into at my level is coordinating with the county and making sure we have things on their agenda.
But if it's the fourth Monday, you have the whole month to prepare from their meeting.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Pritchard.
This year, I'll be completing my sixteenth year on the board. And there was discussion on this matter, had been in the past. And one of the reasons that we had always kept it on Monday night is because there are a lot of issues from time to time, especially when we're in the building projects and that type of thing and funding, that we do have to vote on something here and put a resolution before the county commissioners and have it approved before we go do those presentations. And moving it on the Tuesdays, because they meet every other Tuesday, we had always decided to keep it on Monday. And I know everybody's got other reasons, you know, for other nights. But I changed my work schedule twice since I've been on this board. And right now, it would be virtually impossible for me to go with any other night but Monday because I completely made it so that I would be off on the days that we have board meetings. Because that was the way that we operated, and I felt like I owed that to the public. Tuesday nights would almost completely be out for me. But anyway, I mean, I know the board's going to decide to do what they want to do. But now, I hadn't given it much thought, but Mr. Schwartz brought up a good point. We could still do it on Monday, the fourth Monday.
Yeah, just do it.
And have plenty of time to prepare for the county commissioners if we did that because we'd stay there, we have a week and a half to prepare for that.
And I'm okay with that if that's... And I'm okay with that, if that's, if that's the board's agreeable, and Mr. Schwartz, if you're agreeable with that?
Fine with those. That would be very helpful.
I mean, we've got a few, we've got a few little things that we would have to tweak or quirk or whatever, like swearing in of elections officers and that type of thing, you know, where we've always done that the first week of December, and people are elected, you know, on election day. But we've got plenty of advanced notice where we can change something in our bylaws, you know, to be able to do that, and still meet the state requirements for, for doing that. But, I mean, but I, that would be one of the very few things that I can think of that we would have to really address. We used to have, we used to have issues because a lot of the school board conferences always fail on the weeks that we met, and we would have to change meetings anyway, but doing it the fourth Monday would never interfere with any of our educational work sessions or school board conferences that we would be attending. So, I'll make a motion that we move it to the fourth Monday night, if that'll work for Schwartz's firm and for some of the rest of the board.
Second. All right. Any more discussion?
Let me make, Madam Chair.
Okay. Lynn?
Let me make one, one suggestion. The fourth Monday night in May is Memorial Day, so that you might want to...
We always have to adjust, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
If I may, once-
We have, we have voted to have them another day, but not consistently, you know, when it fell on a holiday or something.
And we can put the, the whole calendar together and get it out to the, to the members and look at that with those suggestions.
I mean, a lot of times, like, 4th of July, we, we usually always move that board meeting to the second week or, or anyway, so.
So, what we, what you would need then is a motion to change the regular, the board's regular monthly meeting to the fourth Monday of, of the month?
Right, and you said that would work with your schedule as well.
Yes, thank you.
And is that, within this motion, is that to start now, or is that to start July 1? I think we want-
I think we talked about doing it beginning now.
Doing it now.
But that also gives people the opportunity that want to speak, to speak here at city council and at the county commissioners' meeting.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Henderson?
Madam Chair, I would just set caution that we also need to look at some of our deadlines and things like that, particularly as it relates to student reassignment. I know that in our student reassignment, when we were looking at policies, there were certain deadline dates that we had placed in that policy. So, I would ask that that policy be looked at to be in line with, with this action.
Okay.
As well as the bylaws policy, because the bylaw policy had already been drafted to say that we were going to go to Tuesday nights.
Right. All right, I have a first and a second, and we are motion. So, without any further discussion, all in favor of our meeting on the fourth Monday night of the month, and when necessary, we will have to make changes. Show your agreement by raising your right hand. Of those opposed?
Yes, Madam Chair, and the reason I have to oppose is because I serve at my church, and we always have our, our church quarterly business meeting the fourth Monday night of every, four times a year.
Oh, four times a year, okay. All right, the motion passed, and we will begin that starting next month, March.
Thank you.
Go ahead. What I was going to say, the, the fourth Monday of February is the 26th, and rather than waiting two months between meetings, if I could suggest, we could go ahead and schedule the Monday night meeting of, for February 26th?
Yeah, we've been relieved of a work session. We can do it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll get that calendar out to you first thing in the morning.
All right.
I'm also up next. It was brought, and I'll refresh some of the board members, last year, we had done a resolution opposing the K3 class sizes, DPI, and some of the leadership in the state had cautioned systems from sending that in, that it would upset some of our legislative bodies. In speaking with our county commissioners, they did a resolution at their last meeting opposing it. This is something that's being done across the state at all county commission meetings, as well as at boards of education. We already have our resolution in place, and, and it was completed and signed off on. I would just ask that the board vote to reaffirm that tonight. We'll change the date. I'm going to get that copy from Mr. Honeycutt first thing in the morning, and we will get those sent out on behalf of all of Wayne County.
I need a motion.
So moved.
All right. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed?
Ms. Bolton House had to leave, and she was going to speak to this memorandum of understanding, but I've also worked very closely with this with AP Exhaust, as we've talked and have a contract that almost are going to be talking to next to have approval. This is for AP Exhaust to partner with us and start a CTE program that we are going to place at Goldsboro High School, that will include basic welding and advanced manufacturing. So, we do have a plan in place, if you would look at that. We have to move rather quickly so we can get it in the course catalog, get the information out to our students, that everybody understands what this new program will involve and what it will do for them, and also working with AP Exhaust is, they're opening up their areas to do some tours, bringing their staff in to talk what they do. Oftentimes, a lot of our students, what we find, they don't know what's out there, and then when they do go out there, it wasn't what they were expecting, and didn't really necessarily understand everything that went along with that. So, we've been dealing with them for several months now on this, and I think we have a really good plan in place that as they come out and speak to our students and we narrow down that group who's going to be our maiden class, that we can also then get them down to the facility and really see what goes on there. We've worked really hard and have checked with insurances, that they're willing to also identify and hire our students in the summer months as a kind of sort of an internship, job shadowing, which they're agreeing to pay for. So, there's some pretty exciting things on the horizon with this, and they are going to invest a considerable amount of money, and we're pretty excited to where this could lead. We're already having a conversation with other businesses here in the county, want to get involved in that program, and also get involved in the partnership. So, I would ask that the board would approve the memorandum of understanding, and we can partner with Wayne Exhaust in starting this new CTE program at Goldsboro High School.
So moved. I need a second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Any questions for the superintendent? If not?
One thing, Dr. Dunsmore.
Yes, sir.
What exactly will be the subject matter at this camp?
So, it's basically, it, there's an advanced manufacturing curriculum, it's a four-year program, it includes basic welding. I don't have the curriculum in front of me, I will get that from Ms. Bolton House and get it out to you. So, there's courses that build upon courses, that they have to meet those requirements as they move on. Our ultimate goal is that you would have a certification in that area when you graduate, and if you wanted to go on to more advanced training, we're partnering with Wayne Community College, that they'll accept those students directly into there, like for advanced welding and some of the, why Ryerson wants to get involved, they do a lot of that very precision manufacturing welding, which is computer-based, and same things that AP Exhaust does, that, so as it develops, it'll be a multi-year program with some pretty specific areas, we'll be working with them, that they'll come out ready to go right to work.
All right.
Thank you. No, no other question?
All right, all in favor, please raise your right hand.
You vote on the lease agreement?
No, I, I went out of order, gosh. My eyes are, I'm getting old, I apologize, but-
I'm sorry, so which item were you, were you on now? The MOU or the lease?
We're on the MOU.
We just did the MOU, and now I'm going to do the lease.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the lease. The MOU needs legal review.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay.
So, can you, can, can you have vote, let me suggest you re-vote on that to approve it subject to legal review?
All right. Could I have a change in the motion?
I'm in my motion to include legal review prior to approval.
Do I still have a second?
You did.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, give me a show of your right hand, please. Any opposed? All right. And now we will address the AP Exhaust building lease agreement.
Yes, and members, you have that before you. That has, Mr. Schwartz, one of his colleagues has reviewed that, written this lease for us. It is a multi-year agreement. We'll be moving our print shop and some of our other offices that now occupy the old Goldsboro Middle School into that building, making room for the advanced manufacturing program at Goldsboro High School, and also freeing up space at a perfectly good school building we need to be using for students. This lease was designed, so it's a break even for AP Exhaust, they're not making any money on this, this will cover their property taxes and insurances, they're putting a lot of money getting the building ready for us, and we're really excited about this partnership.
I need a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
A second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? I need all of those that are in favor of the AP Exhaust building lease agreement, please raise your right hand. Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hayes? Good evening, Mr. Hayes.
Sorry to make sure you're still up there.
We are still here.
Yeah, we're ready for you. Good.
We were trying to pull up your-
The first item before you should be three donations, all three going to Rosewood Elementary, and you'll see the people that donated the cash to the schools, and I ask that you approve the donations as presented.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the donations that have been presented to Rosewood Elementary School on offer.
Second.
All right. If there's not any discussion, all in favor of approving the donations to Rosewood, Rosewood Schools, raise your right hand. Any opposed? All right. Mr. Hayes will continue.
Okay. Secondly, you should have the summary of purchase orders for the month of February that we're asking for approval. And at this point, I'll pause and see if there are any specific questions on any of the purchase orders on the list.
I do have one question. These are all purchase orders, none of these are separate contracts, correct?
These are all purchase orders.
Okay, so the agenda item says approval of contracts slash POs, should just be POs?
All right, is this surplus college textbooks, or is this approval of contracts and POs? Contracts and POs, okay.
It's approval of POs tonight, because he said it is.
It's approval of POs.
Okay, you have a scratch of contracts. All right. All in favor of approving?
You need a motion?
Let me have a hand.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm asking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the POs.
May I interject real quickly into this one? Number 16, board members, I think some of you were contacted on this. I added this as a discussion point. This is the State School Board Association, their legislative agenda. They ask, based on our ADMs, that we agree to pay an additional $6,000 a year for a legislative lobbyist. My first year here, which would have been three years ago, we did do this. Last year, you chose not to join, and I believe, Mr. Flowers, you and Ms. Burden were called in regards to that, asking us to join up again. It's on there. If you would like us to go ahead and be part of that process, or if you want us to remove that, we will, we can remove that.
Dr. Dunsmore?
And I appreciate you drawing my attention to that, because you did add that. Do we benefit from that, in your opinion? Because we have lobbyists regardless, the School Board Association has lobbyists.
They have two full-time lobbyists that work as part of our normal fees and services. This is a third one that they've added. I, I'm not sure how I can quantify the value. You know, it's somebody at Jones Street on a regular basis, they do get an awful lot of information out to us. I believe when they talk to you, Ms. Burden and Mr. Flowers, as the former board chair, that they're trying to get all the school systems involved in that, more as a show of solidarity. They're trying to partner more with the superintendents' association, but it is $6,000. You know, we do recognize that that's using, you know, our public monies.
Is that information we wouldn't get otherwise?
No, you'll get the same.
I'm sorry?
You'll get the same, regardless.
I would like to ask that be voted on separate.
All right.
Thank you.
Then, then we'll make comments at that time.
Okay, so help me, I'm-
So, can we make a motion to pull 16 and vote on it separately, please?
And for clarity, as chairman of the facilities committee, we discussed this in length, and I want to call your attention to item 15.
We got a motion on the floor.
We got a motion on the floor, and I need a second.
You need to withdraw, you, you made the motion to approve the purchase orders as presented, you should withdraw your motion. And I make a motion, I mean, I'm going to withdraw my motion to approve the purchase orders as presented.
Okay.
And make a motion that we remove 16 and vote on it separate.
All right, I need a second.
I second.
All right. Is there any more discussion on six, item 16? If not, if you are in agreement that we remove this from the discussion of POs at this time, please show by raising your right hand. All right, thank you. Any opposed? None. All right, now, do we go to approve the POs?
Now, you need to, yes.
Approve the POs. I make a motion that we approve the POs 1 through 15 as stated by Mr. Hayes.
I need a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I want to, a point of clarity for the board, item 15, that is for the air conditioning systems for Broadwood Middle School, Fremont, and Rosewood, and Granton. That, we're taking $225,000 out of local funds, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, that's coming out of our $2 million small capital outlay funds?
Plus the whatever surplus we have left over, but yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. That was not budgeted in our small capital outlay funds, but when those were, the county commissioners, that was one of our, our projects, was those air conditioning, and we asked for, and they funded $400,000. Upon actual getting all the bids in and everything, it was $625,000. So, we are having to take monies out of our normal $2 million that we're allocated for capital outlay to fund that. I'm in favor of it, doing it, but I just want to make sure the board had that clarity on, on that. Since, you've all seen a spreadsheet of the other projects that are on that list, and something's going to obviously not get accomplished, because we haven't spent some of the money on this.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the POs 1 through 15 as presented, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? And now we need to go to number 16.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we do not approve that. Madam Chair, I make a motion, we do not approve that.
I second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
The reason I make that motion is because this is paying for a lobby, a lobbyist, uh, or contributing to the pay of a lobbyist for the North Carolina School Board Association. I have not, since my time on the board, I have not always supported, uh, in my mindset, uh, the, the platform of everything that the North Carolina School Board Association, um, politics for. For example, uh, they, they always advocate for local school boards have their own individual taxing authority. And we not operate under the county commissioners. Well, I'm opposed to that. So I can't support paying a lobbyist for somebody else, the North Carolina School Board Association, um, when I don't agree with all of their platform all of the time. So I don't think we should do it. There's a motion, I second, we'll vote on it.
And, uh, the, the, the other two lobbyists, so we're saying there are three lobbyists, the other two lobbyists are lobbying for whom?
The school board.
So they're all for the school board? And in your opinion, Dr. Dunsmore, why are there three?
I, I, the, the way it was explained to us, um, several years ago was just the amount and volume of information coming out of the General Assembly and to keep up to that and be able to give information out to us.
And do we contribute to the other two?
Well, that is part of our yearly.
So we've already, we're already contributing? Okay. Any idea as to the number of school systems participating and not participating percentage-wise? Half, more than half, less than half?
I, I, I don't have the exact figure on that in speaking to my colleagues. It, it's about half and half. But I, I can send out a request and see what I can get as far as an answer for that for you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any other comments or for discussion?
Ms. Burden, uh, in my opinion, I mean, we, we're, we're already paying a fee to the state, the North Carolina School Board Association. They have two people on the legislative floor lobbying for public education. Our attorney just said, well, you know, we're still privileged to everybody the information that comes out of there, so I, the amount is, is minimal when you're looking at our total budget, however, I, I don't know that we get that much money for it, but we're gonna get the information regardless. So I, I just think it's, that's why I seconded the motion and I'm gonna vote against it.
And just one last thing, and I, and I don't disagree with that per se, but, um, but to vote against it because you disagree with the lobbyist, uh, objectives and platform, that, that to me is not a reason to, to, to not support it. But I do understand, uh, everybody has their right to vote the way they want to, but, uh, that, that to me, I don't agree with everything that the board does, but I can, you know, it is what it is, so.
Let, let me clarify what I said. I just said that I'm not gonna vote for it simply because our attorney just sat here and said that we're gonna get the information regardless. So by paying $6,000, we're not gonna get any additional information that we wouldn't already get.
You'll, you'll get the same information, obviously with that, that third lobbyist, you'd have less advocacy.
Right.
You know, it won't affect the flow of information, but it will affect the extent and effectiveness of the advocacy.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to vote to not approve item sixteen, uh, listed on the, uh, PO listings. All in favor? Raise your right hand, please. All against?
So I guess that makes it approved by our commission, do we need to vote?
No, it doesn't, you need a separate vote to actually approve it.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve line item sixteen on our, uh, purchase orders.
Second. All right, any discussion? Okay. We will now vote on the approval of item sixteen on the purchase order listing. All in favor, please, uh, show by raising your right hand. All opposed? All right. Mr. Hayes, uh, you have more to give?
I do.
All right.
Our next item, uh, is a list of surplus college textbooks, uh, that we're no longer able to use with our students, um, here in Wayne County. Um, so the, um, request is to make these books surplus so that we can go ahead and sell them. We can get $4,000 that's, um, all included, uh, the shipping, the packing and then, uh, the fees for these books.
Who will we be selling them to?
Uh, there's a book source, uh, the company's called Book Source, and I guess they can, um, turn them over and there may be other college courses that they can use.
All right.
And where.
I've, I've got a question. And I don't know whether, I don't even know whether it's possible or not. But, um, I know that they were, uh, uh, my, both of my children, one of them still in college, but, um, anyway, uh, when they got through with textbooks and that type of thing, they were never offered from the college bookstores what they were worth and what they had paid for. But there were other companies out there that would purchase those books and there was even Chegg, I don't know if y'all dealt with them or not, um, but that's a wonderful opportunity for people to turn in books and get a credit. And then when other textbooks are coming out, they can trade in their credits for the, the new textbooks, the new books that are coming out. So my question is, is did you, did you get a quote from an organization like that? Will they deal with a business like a school entity? And, um, and if so, can we use that credit towards the purchase of future college textbooks that we may need, um, to defray that cost? And, um, I, I think it would be well worth us looking into it, um, before we actually surplus the books. How many sources did you go to to get prices?
I think there were, uh, three sources that were sought out to, uh, uh, offer these books to, to purchasing, you know, this is a good party, uh, reseller that we were going to. Uh, I, I do not know that we looked into trying to get any kind of credit for future,
Purchases.
Purchases.
It's just, I mean, it's, it's gotten to where about, about 70% of the students that I know that's been in college, that's how they dispose to go check the textbooks, because they could get far more for them than they would at, at the campus bookstores and, and also at the offsite campus bookstores. So, and then, of course, they had a credit for the next semester. But my, my whole thing was why, why couldn't we do that with the, that now? I, I don't know whether the companies we buy textbooks for are giving us below wholesale price or whatever, but, um, I, I just feel like it'd be worth us looking into, uh, we may find that we, that would be a better way to go. If not now, for future purchases.
We certainly can go back and take it in at that.
The vast majority, we're trying to reuse as, as many times as we can with the college and in agreement with them that they would try to reuse textbooks. Our problem that we're finding is that textbooks all now come with an electronic code. So you buy the book and the code, but the code's only usable once. So, books are less and less valuable now than they used to be when it was just a book that didn't need a code. This is a fairly small collection of our overall collection that when we bought books, we put back into kids' hands, but our other problem is, um, timeliness. The longer it takes us to sell them, the less valuable they become because they're only gonna be worth it to a college for another semester or two and then nobody will want to buy them, so. I wanna get them sold.
Okay, I, I understand, I'm just, I'm just asking in the future then.
So we can research more, try to do more.
If we could get, if we could get $5,000 worth of credit towards
Right.
Another purchase sometimes, it might would behoove us to take a look at that.
And a lot will be dependent in future years on how much textbook money the state continues to give us, whether the board's going to be able to approve to continue to buy college textbooks for our students who can't afford textbooks. So, we only keep the ones that we purchased, but say next semester, you know, we didn't get, if we don't get money and we can't purchase textbooks for whatever reason, then we won't have any to sell anyway, so.
That was all.
Yep.
You can go take a vote.
Okay, do we have a motion to, uh, approve, uh, uh, surplusing the college textbooks and selling them at this time?
And second.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor, please show by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right.
We are, uh, rapidly approaching the budget season and so before you is a calendar of the, just big chunks of things that we want to keep on the radar as it relates to our upcoming budget. So those dates and some of those activities are before you and, uh, I will entertain any specific questions you might have. Otherwise, I would request that you approve the budget calendar as we prepare to move forward.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve the budget calendar for 2018, 2019.
All right, do I have a second?
Do any of these dates change based on the change in the board meetings?
What days do we have?
Yeah, we're actually planning to have a budget work session.
Mr. West, can you restate?
April 20th.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Can you restate your motion that, um, subject to changes on, with the new board meeting time?
Have we looked at the calendar?
Well, let, let me point this out, you need to be able to present this to the county commissioners by no later than May 15th. I don't know if there's been any discussion to present it any sooner than that, but May 15th is the statutory deadline. On this calendar, it's got May 7, board approval of budget request. That would
That would back up.
That would back up to April, uh...
Twenty seven, no, 23rd?
No, actually, well, that's the fifth Monday. That'd be fifth Monday, yeah, I'm sorry.
Twenty third?
April 23rd. You got a work session on Friday, April 20th.
Is that enough time?
Uh, that's, I don't think that would be enough time once we go through the work session and cooperate with the chairman, so I will pull this back, rework the dates and bring it back, uh, at our next meeting.
Okay. Now, do we have to vote for him to?
Got a motion.
To pull that back because we have a motion on it?
Uh, did you, did you have a second?
Did I have a second?
You want to restate your motion?
There was no second.
There was no second, so it dies.
Okay, who, who made the motion?
I did.
You can withdraw the motion.
Okay, I just, I'll withdraw the motion to approve the budget calendar until Mr. Hayes can go back and get us some other dates in lieu of the fact that we changed our board meeting days on it today without him knowing it?
Yes.
And we may have to have a special call board meeting.
I, I just had some questions relative to this Fund Four. I see that two or three different times, one is Fund Four and the project proposals, and then there's Fund Four outlet proposals.
Fund Four is where the allocation, the $2 million that's allocated from the county, budgeted and spent from.
Okay, and you say you, and are you saying you're funding only four of those projects?
No, Fund Four is the
Is the title, is the title, okay, the title of the, okay. And, uh, on, um, did you, the, these projects relate to maintenance, security, safety? Are those the kind of priorities that you are looking at? You know, we had in the last facilities meeting, discussion about coming up with how you're gonna determine your priority of these, the basis is by which you're
Uh, that, that is the, uh, the, the general idea in terms of being able to get, uh, the projects backed from, um, the, um, budget managers and to use as our means of setting the priorities, but we have not gone through its, uh, determinants specifically, all of those priorities and, and how they would be set up. We were giving those, just some general guidelines in terms of being able to tell us, um, if what they were requesting was a safety issue or if it, uh, you know, was just through the maintenance or the depth of security related to student learning is gonna be in some justification for the project.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the last item, and you will be done with me, uh, we have a budget amendment for some additional, uh, grants that, uh, the state has provided for us. And so that's, um, uh, before you, the, the main piece is the teacher bonuses were paid, uh, with the January payroll by statute. Uh, so we're, we've received, uh, the funds and we're just requesting that you approve the budget amendment for additional monies coming into the LDO.
I need a motion to approve
Shannu.
The budget amendment?
And second.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the budget amendment, um, uh, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? We didn't find ourselves in the predicament of Wake County, did we?
No.
All right, Dr. Dunsmore.
Um, as requested, I've provided members, uh, had asked for some goals and objectives, they are provided. It was determined that, uh, we would like the board's approval to move forward.
And Madam Chair, this is up for board approval of the superintendent's goals and objectives?
Yes, I, I make a motion that we approve or accept the approval of the superintendent's goals and objectives as his stating given to us. We've all had an opportunity to look at them.
I need a second.
I second the motion.
In the discussion, I thought we were going to try to make sure that we pinpointed for Dr. Dunsmore in the next months to come, specific ones that we wanted to be able to address and evaluate him on in, um, no later than, uh, June 30th. And so if there are no priorities in any of these categories, um...
Well, um, there, there, there needs to be a prioritization. And I don't know, um, if these were submitted, I know they're numbered, are they submitted in any type of priority, Dr. Dunsmore? Okay. Looking at, uh, these, uh, these items, for instance, we're talking about the, uh, the continued work on Wayne Development Authority and the CTE site. I think we made some, kind of made a, made some moves in that direction tonight with some of the votes we took, we've taken, uh, to approve the, uh, rental of that facility. The organization of the reorganization of alternative school. I mean, can we, can you tell us, Dr. Dunsmore, to any degree, uh, can you put any timelines towards these or projected timelines?
I can add them, a, a lot of with the upcoming, uh, changes in the ESA is probably gonna change that timeline for the alternative school because it's gonna become a state mandate. So, um, whether or not there'll be any funding attached to that remains to be seen, but in that area in particular, um, assigning schools are gonna have ownership for those test scores and other areas, so that's going to... scores and other areas, so that's going to probably accelerate that timeline.
Yeah, because what, what concerns me more than anything else is not the information. I think the information is, is spot on, I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased with what I'm reading, so that's not my issue. My issue is prioritization and putting some type of timeline in with which to achieve some of these goals, because for me, a lot of these things, you know, they've been talked about for a lot of years, and without a timeline associated with it, or a projected timeline, they may continue on. So, I, I don't know if I'm on my own with that, but that's my thought.
Do you want, Madam Chair, just as a suggestion, this is, uh, this is something that could absorb an inordinate amount of board time and discussion if you want to do that, that's, that's of course up to the board. Alternatively, you could ask the superintendent to suggest his priorities, and then the board could review those, if that's your pleasure. But, uh, this would be an awful lot to go through at a, at a board meeting.
At a board meeting, yes.
It's not a standalone.
Well, that's why I suggest a work session, possibly, and I, and I know it may or may not cause for that, but I do think that just rubber stamping it without prioritizing it is, is, is to me, placing it in the, to do, to be done whenever I can file.
Well, you've got a motion to approve the goals and objectives, you could also ask the superintendent to come back with timelines or priorities and that sort of thing to be considered at a later time if, if, if the goals and objectives are satisfactory to you.
That's what the motion is for, is to prove what is going on.
And each of those areas are part of the superintendent's evaluation, so each of those areas, if we're going to use that evaluation tool, there's going to have to be work done on all those areas.
Well, there might be work done on all of the areas, but I think in terms of what is in an, an area, what you have packaged in there, you, you have eight items out of strategic leadership, but it might be that three of those items are priorities for the board. And, you know, not that you won't work on some of the other ones, but we would need maybe timelines or to put some information there that would allow us to address those goals in the evaluation process. So, you're saying that we can approve the goals tonight and then ask him to come back with his priorities?
That's one, that's one option, another option would be a standalone work session, it's, it, it's whether you want to break this into, you know, one, a couple of different pieces, or whether you want to try and tackle it all tonight, to establish priorities tonight. That's up to the board.
I don't think we want to suggest in that, I was just pointing that out.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to remove my second.
Okay.
So, it does not have a second.
Okay.
Unless somebody else wants a second.
All right, so the motion fails for not having a second. So, now, could I say that we need a motion for a work session to work with the superintendent in prioritizing his and, and from the board's perspective?
Are we going to work with him, or are we going to ask him to prioritize it, and then we're going to look at it?
Well, that's, I want him to come back with his priority.
Make your motion.
And then we look at it. I want somebody else to make the motion.
Madam Chair?
As a chair.
Let me, let me, um, make a motion that we hand this back to the superintendent and ask him to prioritize this list and bring it back to the board for further consideration.
Could you, could you also include in that, which, if you would, not only to prioritize it, but to put some timelines associated with it as well?
Um, sure.
Implementation timeline?
Sure. Prioritize and timelines.
Okay.
But, with further board input.
Would the timelines depend on anything, Dr. Dunsmore?
Sure.
Out of your control?
Mm-hmm.
So, it'd be kind of hard for you to put timelines on it.
While I can, I'll...
Yeah.
Or you can...
I need a second.
I second it.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion? All right, all in favor of returning these to the, the, the goals and objectives to the superintendent for him to prioritize and give us timelines where appropriate, and with further input from the board? If you are in agreement with this, please raise, show by raising your right hand.
That should be resubmitted to the board.
Yeah, resubmitted to the board.
Thanks.
And now, this is my next question, Madam Chair. What we're going to be looking at and evaluating, is it going to be based on, from the start of that evaluation to the end of the year, or are we looking at taking this information and trying to determine what happened the earlier part of the year and include that as a part of our evaluation?
Well, I, I think to be fair to the superintendent, I, I would, my suggestion would be that we start now and measure it to June. But if he's done something that's on this list that he's already progressing with, I don't see that there's a problem there.
I, I was just looking at the three-month time period of the evaluation.
Yeah, that's what I was considering, that's why I wanted him to prioritize, and then the board is in agreement and it matches up with what we want to focus on as a board. And then, that's, we measure him for these three months, and then we have to move into it, July 1st.
And to your point, Mr. Henderson, there are several items up here that the superintendent and his staff are already working on, so...
So, so, so we can include that in our assessment?
Yes.
Well, and some of the thing, you know, and we can discuss it more, but some of the things are, is, is a general statement, a general goal, like focus on the business aspect of school operations. Well, you know, you, that's a general statement.
Your interpretation may be different from mine as I look at that.
Yeah, and, and, but, but what I would like to have board input in is like item six in the strategic leadership, separate school of engineering, middle and high school populate to expand, move to middle school engineering students to a new site. Item five is further discussion on proposed magnet arts program that goes for high school. You know, I'm not in favor of that.
So, we need to have a discussion?
Yeah, item per item is what I would like to see.
So, if we can do that in a work session?
Yeah, so a work session or, or have a...
But we have to keep in mind that we need to get this done.
We do.
Okay. Because we're not only hindering the superintendent, but we are hindering our process of evaluation.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, so we, we voted. And then you asked a question.
Really?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
All right.
I was just asking a question to clarify, that doesn't affect that motion.
Uh-uh, okay.
Sure, we are.
All right, so now we are at the consent agenda, and we added an item, item... Item D, denial of student appeal.
Student transfer appeals.
So, you need to read that?
As recommended by the committee.
Yes.
Okay, before we, a consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings open to the public and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, I mean, yes, consent agenda, which includes, uh, item D, denial of students' transfer appeals?
To move.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If we do all consent agenda, do we even have the G, this, uh, that should, G should actually be taken, removed from that consent agenda? Would it? I got down here superintendent evaluation.
No, that's board action, isn't it?
It was changed.
It was changed.
I thought the consent agenda was what I'm...
I understand, but they changed it.
But we removed it.
Changed it back there, you must not have reviewed your computer.
The, the only actions remaining on the consent agenda are the approval of the personnel report, which was, um, item B is in Bravo originally, the approval of the student reassignments, which originally was item D, and then the addition of the denial of student transfer appeals as recommended by the committee. Those are the three items that are on the consent agenda.
Right, I understand, but...
But we moved them.
Okay.
All right.
So, a second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? If, no, that can't be. If, if not, all in favor of the consent agenda, please raise your right hand to show agreement. Any opposed? Okay. All right, it is time for our board members' comments. Mr. West, did we start with you last time?
Yes, ma'am, you did.
Okay, so I'm going to start with our board attorney.
I'm not a board member, but I do appreciate very much your accommodation of the change in the board meeting schedule, and, uh, that will make things an awful lot easier for us to avoid any conflicts with all of our other boards. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. West?
Madam Chair, I'd like to start by just saying to Dr. Dunsmore, I'd like to express my confidence and appreciation in you, Dr. Dunsmore, and your leadership team for the vision and the direction that you are taking Wayne County Public Schools. I think you and your team have taken great strides and making big improvements in our school district. As we all know, we're, we're a seven-member board with seven opinions, and I typically try to keep mine to myself, but since it was mentioned earlier in tonight, and this is not done to be disrespectful to anybody, but I just want to add, and I'll start out, I'm talking about student reassignment, and I'll start out by saying, I served as the board chair for this board for two consecutive terms, and in those two years, I had many different occasions at different meetings, state conventions or whatever, to discuss in depth and at length with different school board chairs from across, mostly from the eastern part of North Carolina, about student reassignment, redrawing district lines. And the thing that I heard from 90% of the people that I spoke with, some of them had done their student reassignment, redistricting, some had talked about it and hadn't done it yet. But the main thing that I heard from them was, it takes, it's a two-year process. You have to collect all the data you can collect, you can never collect enough, you have to have numerous committee meetings, numerous meetings in the community to get input from stakeholders, and I, I, it's just, it's just, um, to me, I think that we have maybe jumped, I'm not going to say we, as a board member, I think that we've moved a bit quick in that direction to just to openly start talking about the fact that we're going to quote, redistrict and reassign students. I mean, we have a lot of work to do to even determine whether there's a need to even do it. I think that we have some of our biggest problems and, or overcrowding problems at some of our elementary schools, which doesn't affect high school and middle school, however, you know, we have to look at the district as a whole. I say that because in lieu of the fact that we're dealing with a pending legislation right now in Raleigh, that's going to, that could considerably change the K through three classroom sizes, for us to put all this work and this effort into it, I'm not going to say it's a waste of time, but I think it's premature because we don't know what we're going to face as a mandate from the state legislatures. So, until we know that, I think that we, you know, we, we did form a committee, a student reassignment committee with this board some three or four months ago, to only quote, in my opinion, as, as the vote I understood, was to explore the student reassignment possibilities and the redraft, redrawing of district lines, to do the groundwork and start the groundwork. We haven't made a decision as a board that I know of, I've not voted on one, that we're going to move forward and we're going to quote, redistrict and redraw district lines and, and have student reassignments. I've not voted for that, and I don't think that's ever come to a vote for this board. So, to put this redistricting, student reassignment on whole probably is a wise decision because we don't want to do all this work, all this groundwork, and then have the state legislatures come up to us and, not just us, but all 100 LEAs in this state and say, hey, you're going to put 17 kids in a first grade class. I mean, because we, if they do that, all the work we've done, we've got it all to do over again. So, you know, I'm not saying we've wasted time, because certainly we'll have data collected, but we're going to have to back up and, and, and go down another avenue, another road, because if it's a mandate from the state, we don't have a choice, that's what we have to do. So, the committee we formed, I think is, it was good, I mean, they can do what, do their work, they can explore, they can get, they can hold community, I don't know how many community meetings, I don't know of any that we've held to invite parents to, for discussion or whatever. So, I'd just like to say that, I, you know, I don't, as far as a statement that was made in the paper, you know, I, I just think that it's wise for this board to wait and see what the state tells us that we have to do before we start deciding what we're going to do. There again, I only speak for myself, so, you know, I just don't want Wayne County Public Schools to get into a situation that some of the other school districts in this state are in, and that is getting to the point that we tweak or redraw district lines every year, because that, I mean, there, there's some districts in this state that do that, and that, to me, as a parent, that would be a logistical nightmare. I mean, if, we, we need to put the time and effort into it, number one, to determine if there is a need district-wide, or if it's just some isolated places where we have some overcrowding, mostly elementary schools. And Dr. Lewis, you've gotten, collected a lot of data for us and give us, and I appreciate that, and that's what I think the indication is, that mostly at, at our elementary schools is where we have a problem. So, I just wanted to say from, and that's just my opinion, and I'm speaking as a board member, one board member on a seven-board panel, I've not voted for any redrawing district lines or any student reassignment. I think there's a lot of work that has to go into it before we even bring that to the public. So, I just wanted to say that, and I, I appreciate the work that you, that the administration and the leadership team has done, and, and moving toward getting the information to us to, so we can make a, a wise decision on whether we need to do it or not. So, thank you for that. And I'd also like to, Madam Chair, I said something to you earlier, we, we unfortunately, we lost a very good supporter and, and member of our team, so to speak, in that, in Dave Thomas. For those of you who knew him, I mean, he was a great community man, he served as a teacher, he served as a coach, he served as the county AD, and he served as the board member in the district that I, as a matter of fact, when he stepped off of the board, I took his seat on the board, and I will never forget it. I don't know, Mr. Sauce, correct me if I'm wrong, but he was probably 70 when he got off the board, he got, and even you know him, it was funny, I didn't know he was going to do it, but he got right there on that floor and sitting there and did about 21-handed push-ups when he went out the door. And he, and, and I never saw him, he went to church with me, and I never saw him at church, that he didn't come up to me every Sunday and thank, not just me, but thank this board for the work that we were doing, because he truly was a supporter of Wayne County Public Schools. And I'd like to see us in some way or fashion, he, he's got a wonderful wife and family, and in, sometime in, in the pretty near future, if we could do something to honor him, I think, I, I think it would be appropriate, because he was a big part of Wayne County Public Schools, and, and those are my comments.
Mr. Flowers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As chairman of the facilities committee, we had a, a meeting, and I wanted to give the board a brief report on our conversations there. Mr. Randy Baker gave us, I think he's a project manager, that might not be his exact title, but he gave us a project update on the metal lane. The school is, my understanding, scheduled to be completed on December 18th and, of this year, December 18th, 2018. There was a little beholdback from the extreme cold weather, but I think they're moving past that, but they are basically on schedule. There was, at the meeting, there was talk and concern about the turn lanes in the highway in front of the school. We were hoping for a four lane, so that those, if you can picture it in your mind, so that those people that are turning into the school will be able to turn in, but then there's a holding lane in the middle where those people can turn in and not impede traffic. And anyway, the DOT, it's my understanding from that conversation, doesn't necessarily have to do that or pay for that, but I was given word, and correct me if I'm wrong, the DOT was going to do that for us. So, that's a great accomplishment, if the DOT will help us with that, and I salute them for anything that they can do for us, because if, if we have to pay for it, it would be like a lot of money. for anything that they can do for us, because if, if we have to pay for it, it would be like a lot of money. But anyway, that project's going really good. You can see it when you ride by. Um, I think they're getting ready to put the trusses up, so when you see them, you'll get a little better idea of the outline of the school. Uh, tonight, we voted to, uh, pay the balance on the, um, bill for the, our air conditioning units at those four schools, and those air conditioning units will complete, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, all of the schools we have will have air conditioning gyms, every one of them. Um, that is to be completed by June of this year, is the scheduled completion date. We talked about Northwest Elementary and Fremont Stars. Uh, you know, we have, uh, a, a project there. A consideration was to expand the classrooms at, um, Fremont Stars and now Northwest Elementary. Um, that is in the design stage right now. Um, we, um, left that as that we were going to, or staff was going to contact, uh, the sewer supplier there to make sure what kind of sewer capacity was available before we moved ahead. Uh, the tentative, uh, plan as we were looking at was putting twelve classrooms at Northwest and twelve at Fremont Stars. Uh, there was some concern spoken to about the size of cafeteria at Fremont Stars. And when you add additional classrooms, you have additional classroom, uh, cafeteria needs. The Southern Wayne property, um, the Southern Wayne project, uh, the, uh, we've completed a property line survey. There was some question about the property line, and that has been completed and done. The timber that, uh, has been voted on previously to be sold at sealed bid is out for bids currently. Uh, we're in the design and renovation stage and process. If you remember, uh, I think the county had budgeted to commissioners that they would pay four point five million dollars. So, we're, uh, we're trying to work with those numbers as about what we can do at Southern Wayne. Now, Mr. Henderson alluded to this, uh, earlier. Uh, out of that meeting, uh, come the need to prioritize our, we call it our capital outlay, small project capital outlay budget. It's two million dollars that the county gives us yearly, uh, to come up with a priority list. And we actually asked, uh, maybe that to go to policy committees, for those of you that's on policy. Um, um, we would like, like to move forward that with our upcoming budget. And that, um, uh, just in our conversation, there was things of priority, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Henderson, when you make your statements, but like a priority would be like if a school had a safety concern, that, that would obviously be a higher priority than a cosmetic concern. Uh, like, for example, if you needed new carpet. Uh, one school we had, had some electrical issues, electrical receptacles. We felt like that something like that would, because it, it might be a safety issue, would be a higher priority. Uh, with something that's contributing to the learning environment. So, we'd like a priority list and, um, that, that comes with that. So, um, to give, um, staff maybe some guidance from the board as exactly how to prioritize the spending of that two million dollars. Um, and I'm gonna throw this in too. We didn't talk about this at, at the, um, facilities meeting, but I was just crunching some numbers, and, um, sometimes when y'all see me up here playing with my phone, I'm not Facebooking. Uh, but I, I, I am kind of a numbers guy, and, um, I think about things in relationship one to another. And, um, we have thirty-five schools in Wayne County. And, um, if you use a number of fifteen million dollars per school, which you couldn't build our schools for fifteen million dollars apiece, a high school is way much more than that to build. I don't know what they are, but let's just say that our schools are worth fifteen million dollars apiece, and there's, um, thirty-five of them. That's five hundred and twenty-five million dollars, the value of our schools, all of them. We get two million dollars a year budget for small capital projects, and we have some other maintenance issues, but, uh, other funds, I think, that, that fall under maintenance. But basically, this two million dollars we use to maintain the schools. Well, I was trying to rationalize that because two million dollars sounds like a lot of money to me and to an average citizen. But it really is only four tenths of one percent of the value of that, at five hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Let me rationalize that to you the way I did it. If you had a hundred thousand dollar home, if your home, your personal residence had a value of a hundred thousand dollars, then that means using that number, four tenths of one percent, then you would have four hundred dollars a year for maintenance for that hundred thousand dollar home. So, um, Michael Hayes, I can see why you scratching your head all the time, how are we gonna pay for this stuff? I mean, just think about it. If you had four hundred dollars to maintain your hundred thousand dollar home. So, I just throw that at a commission, uh, Mr. Superintendent, when you talk to the commissioners. I mean, the numbers are what they are. Um, it's, um, it's not a lot of money to maintain our schools. So, um, anyway, those are my comments. Um, one last comment in regards to redistricting, redistricting or student assignment. It's a complicated matter. It's an emotional matter. Um, I've always been an advocate that we, uh, look at, uh, school district lines. I've never had a mindset that we move all the school district lines at one time, but it seems like it's evolved into that. Uh, if y'all will remember, I've always said that I think a better plan would be to, um, move the district lines a small amount in certain areas to give our staff the authority to do that wherever they saw a need, to do it by degree over time. Um, I still stand with that. I think that's a good way. When you got, when you got one school that's joining another school, and one school is obviously growing at a disproportionate rate and overcrowding at a disproportionate rate, why don't you begin the slow process of tweaking those lines so it doesn't disrupt so many people at one time? I think we're gonna be remiss if we think we're gonna make one time changing school district lines, that that's gonna fix it for twenty years. I just, I don't think that's a good long-term plan. I think, and I understand, Mr. West, mindset that when people buy a home and they invest in a home, that they don't want, they're buying there because of a certain school district that they want the children to go to. I understand that. But this is public schools paid for with public education, public dollars, public education. And we have, in my opinion, a duty to use the facilities that we have for the highest and best use and the fairest for everybody. And sometimes these counties that elect to move them yearly, move them some yearly, they have determined that that is the fairest way to do it. So, those are my comments, and we'll beat that up some more as time goes by.
Okay, Mr. Henderson?
No comment.
Mr. Pridgen?
No comment.
Mr. Smith?
Um, just to congratulate all of the, uh, counselors and the, um, the communications department. You guys did a great job. I really am proud of what you've been able to, to put together. Uh, one of the things that Dr. Dunsmore consistently says is that we need to be the ones telling our story. And I, I agree with him wholeheartedly in that respect, and, um, kudos to you and your department, Ken. Great job. Um, excellent presentation. Uh, Dr. Artis, um, it's Bolton House. You guys, uh, consistently are giving us good feedback. And of course, you know, the good thing is the burden is not yours to bear. You know, that's, that's why we're here. You know, we, we, we put our names on the ballot for the purpose of being in a position to make the tough decisions. And sometimes, a long time ago, I learned that, uh, a lot of times making, um, good decisions are not necessarily popular decisions. And, um, while there may be consternation or disagreement with, uh, certain decisions that the board makes, and when I'm outvoted, it is what it is. We go along with the program and we keep it moving. And I think that that is a, a mindset that, um, that, that the majority of us have. However, disagreement does not mean that there's total disagreement. There's things that, uh, I agree with wholeheartedly that don't necessarily, uh, get translated when people repeat what you say. So, I wanna make it clear that in no way, shape, form, or fashion am I advocating for, uh, any redistricting plan just for the sake of redistricting. The, the primary reason we started talking about redistricting is overcrowding. And that came before the K three legislation. We have been, we voted, one of the first votes that we took when I got on this board was to spend a half a million dollars, and I'll repeat it, one half million dollars, to build trailers so that we could expand Tommy's Road. That's, that's a redistricting issue because we have space at other schools. But yet and still, we voted to build, spend half a million dollars of taxpayers' money to build trailers. So be it. I'm not crying over spilt milk because it is what it is. That's what the board decided to do. But when we start talking about redistricting, let's not make it just about one thing. There are a, there are a veritable plethora of things that we need to look at as it relates to redistricting. None, none the least of which is overcrowding, and none the least of which is the lack of socioeconomic diversity in our schools. That is a fact. And if we continue to ignore that fact, we continue to exacerbate a problem that has been in existence for a long time that's not been dealt with. It is, it is the, it is the proverbial elephant in the room. And if we continue to ignore its existence, it continues to grow and fester and become a bigger problem. And we talked about two schools tonight on the SIG grant. But let's be real, those are not the only two schools that we have in Wayne County that are failing. By no stretch of the imagination are they the only two schools. So, we can, we can throw grants at it, and we can throw philosophies at it, and we can say it's not time to do this, and this, whatever. Say what you wanna say. But I, I can promise you, if we continue to do the same thing that we've been doing, we're going to continue to get the same result. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, Dr. Dunsmore, do you go first?
If you would like.
I would like.
No comment.
All right. Well, I agree with Mr. Mr. Smith on all of the presentations that were done tonight, uh, along with the survey, 'cause he mentioned two, but he had complimented you earlier. But along with the, uh, the presentation on the survey, they were very informatively, informative and well-done. I have some announcements to make. Um, first of all, I'm very proud as a board member to indicate, to share with you that Mrs. Yolanda Nguyen, principal at Brogdon Primary, will be, uh, presenting a model program at the North Carolina Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. She is going to share with the participants how a Wayne County school pairs that, start data with powerful digital instruction to show growth on the EOG test. And having the data to predict success is very valuable. And having the instruction to put the data to work is priceless. So, she is going to be doing that on February the eighth, and I think she's at a conference that probably begins on the seventh, that evening of the seventh. And, uh, I think that they will close out on the eighth. So, we look forward to, uh, hearing about her presentation. And I think it's very, very positive that we have someone who is in the situation that she is in at her school at Brogdon Primary, that can have a model program and show how it works to help not only the teachers, but help show improvement of the students' performance. Tonight, um, we had a report from our CTE program and department. And I want to share with you that February is Career and Technical Education Month. Normally, the North Carolina superintendent provides the governor with a proclamation to sign. This proclamation is read and approved by our board. Since the proclamation has not been released yet, so it won't be available until our, um, not March board meeting, but February board meeting, would you like to make, uh, well, she wanted me to make a comment to let you know that this is forthcoming. Um, and we will do that at our next board meeting to recognize our CTE department. And if there are no further comments, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move, thank you.
All in favor, show your right hand. Thank you.
You hit your gavel, Madam Chair.
All right.